Before we get started on the agenda, I just want to make a couple announcements. One is a reminder that we record meetings. You can see a camera in the back of the room. Not live screen, but the meetings will be posted on YouTube at a later time as long as the recording goes along. Sometimes we have technical difficulties. And secondly, I want to announce that we had an executive session on December 27, 2019 to discuss personnel matter in the Police Department. If everyone could move in, if you have an empty chair next to you, please slide in. There's quite a few people trying to get some seats and I think we have little bit of room here. You all just slide over. Okay, with that, we'll start with the agenda. First order of the first order business is the minutes of December 9, 2019, Board of Supervisors meeting. Will you give permission to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. I second that.
Any comments or questions on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, minutes are approved. Move to the reports. First up, the Chief, the Police Department.
Thank you. Good evening. For the month of December of 2019, the Police Department officers documented 989 incidents in the Police Department's reported system. I was able to identify 576 of those entries as incidents where someone was specifically requesting the services of the Police Department only. During the month, the officers issued 97 traffic citations. They investigated 41 traffic crashes and they arrested 25 individuals. Additionally, for the month of summer, the department members conducted five motor carrier details at the weigh station, resulting in 1,255 trucks being weighed, nine of which were found to be overweight. They conducted 11 federal motor carrier inspections, resulting in numerous violations, including six commercial motor vehicles and two drivers being placed out of service. Some of the year-to-date totals, the officers weighed 10,853 commercial motor vehicles at the weigh station, finding 74 of them to be overweight, requiring them to be placed out of service. They inspected 118 of those trucks, 34 while they were on patrol. They eventually put 37 trucks and 12 of their operators out of service during those details. During the year, the officers issued 2,054 traffic citations. They issued 521 written warnings. They arrested 212 individuals. They documented 12,348 calls for service and they investigated 457 traffic crashes in the township.
Thank you. President's report.
I'll make a motion for December official numbers for our annual guests. So I'll just hear it from January.
Okay, thank you. Public works.
For the month of December, the valley average flow of the downtown street inflines are around 1.4 million gallons per day and there were no new sewer connections. The township received about 8.56 inches of rain, which continued the trend of being above normal. Before the year of 2019, we were about 26.46 inches above average. The department responded to 64 PA1 calls, performed preventative maintenance on the sewer system, specifically in the Marshwood area, started a sign replacement program in the Gardens Everglades area, as well as performing regular vehicle maintenance.
Fire marshal.
Yes, for the month of December, I responded to 15 fire incidents. Also, I continue to review plans for the commercial building projects and inspect those that are under construction.
Fire company.
Fire department. For December, Euclid, there were 26 calls, Upper Euclid 5, West Pikeville 9, 13 other townships, for a total of 53. For the year-end total, Euclid, there was 352, Upper Euclid 91, West Pikeville 64, and 129 other townships. Total incidents for the year of 636.
Thank you. And finally, the Upland Ambulance.
Euclid Ambulance. For the month of December, we did 333 calls. 93 of those were in Euclid and 148 of those were in West Pikeville. For the year, we ended up with 3,819 calls. Also, besides doing those, we attended 70 community events. We did 14 free community CPR and first aid classes. Approximately 525 people were trained and certified. There were five weeks of summer camp for the kids. We had 50 kids attend those. And approximately 1,300 people attended some form of training at the station in 2019.
Thank you. Permission to approve the reports.
I'll make a motion to accept call 4. I second that.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Reports are approved. Moving on to item one on the business, permission to advertise for road materials for 2020 roadway improvement projects.
So we are asking permission to advertise for roadway improvement projects. The roadways that we will be paving that are up are Maple Oak Beach and Phase 1 of Williamsburg Boulevard, which is a section from Mortwood to Burnet.
I'll make a motion to grant permission to advertise for road materials for 2020. I second that.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Question passes. Move to the community day committee.
Right, so back in December, we had a resignation from the Community Day Committee. However, at the December meeting of the Community Day Committee, the board recommended appointing Jason Oliver as a full-time voting member. So that is what is before the board.
And Jason's the next associate at this point?
No, he's currently not a voting member.
I'll make a motion to appoint Jason Oliver as a voting member of the Community Day Committee. I second that.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? All right, question passes. Next item is ordinance 2020-01, appointing portnough law associates for municipal lean collection.
So at our last meeting, we asked for permission to advertise ordinance, appointing portnough associates for municipal lean collection. It takes with an ordinance before you appoint portnough associates as our municipal lean collector, as well setting their P-70 for collection process.
Permission to?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2020-01, appointing portnough law associates for municipal lean collection.
We have a resolution number 1, but this is an ordinance number 1.
I second that.
Okay, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Permission passes. All right, move into the resolutions, 2020-02, 03, and 04.
Right, the resolutions before you tonight are fairly administrative that we have to pass every year as a township. 2020-02, appoints the chief administrators for pension of uniform and non-uniform as the township manager and finance director. 2020-03 is for mileage reimbursement, and we follow the IRS maximums for mileage reimbursement for vehicle travel, and that is 57.5 cents. And finally, 2020-04, appoints emergency services, and the resolution for you, appoint Lionville Fire Company for fire and rescue, Euclid ambulance for ambulance services, Penn Star as air ambulance, and the Euclid Police Department for police services.
Thank you. Again, permission to approve the ordinance for the resolutions?
I move that we approve resolutions 2020-02, 03, 04. I'll second that.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Resolutions are adopted. Moving on to number five, is the Limegate Final Minor Subdivision Plan. An request for an extension?
Yes, I received a letter from John Claypool, who is representing the Limegate Homeowners Association. Back in November, they had submitted their minor subdivision plan, which was to subdivide the farmhouse from the rest of the development. Since they couldn't be here tonight, they submitted the letter granting, well, requesting a waiver from the 90-day time clock, so they would like to be placed on the agenda next month.
I move to grant the request for extension of Limegate. I second that.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Permission passes. And we move to our last item on the business part of the agenda, which is the Sunoco update. And so first, I just want to give a quick summary of the information we have for Sunoco. I don't know, maybe we could, I don't know if people in the back can hear me at all, so I don't know if there's any additional space to move forward. There's three seats over here, if anyone felt that you can't stand or... Well, in this case, just to give you an update on the information on the construction for the Mariner East project. As of today, we've been informed that the work done at the Herman O. West Drive, which is a pipeline going towards Euclid, Upper Euclid, excuse me, the 16-inch pipe pullback at that location is complete, and there's no plans to move forward at this point with the 20-inch pipe. At the Herman O. West Drive to Wharton Boulevard, they are in the middle of the ring process. They estimate they're about 82% complete for their 16-inch pipe, with an anticipated pullback in mid to late January. And there's drilling rigs operating both at the Wharton Boulevard and Herman O. West locations for that stretch of the pipeline. At the Dairy Queen site in Eagleview, the work, following the completion of the work at the previous site that I mentioned, the work will begin at the Dairy Queen site for the 20-inch line, which anticipated at the beginning in March 2020. For the work being done between North Whitford Road and 2 Devon Drive, they've completed 79, they estimated 79 completion, 79% completion for the 20-inch pipe for the pilot wall. They're estimating an anticipated pullback in mid to late March pending the progress of the drilling, of the drilling. And they are currently drilling at both the Devon side and the Whitford side for this stretch of the pipeline. And finally, for the Devon Drive, the Devon Drive site going from Euclid into West White Lane at Showen Road, they are still waiting for the PA/DP to allow activity to restart on either side, so any activities are not officially technically considered drilling activities for those two sites, in between those two sites. There is no information available, at least that they've been able to share with us, on an anticipated date for approval to start work. With that, I usually spend some time, I know not everyone spends on these meetings, but we have open comment for the Sunoco issues only right now, and then we'll move on to have general public comments for any township-related business. And then we'll move on after that to have the conditional use hearing for the Hankin Group Eagleview Apartments at Town Center. So if someone in the back, maybe we can allow them to move forward. Like I said, this is about the Sunoco work right now.
It's something related to that. I was wondering if the board supervisors had an official statement on the arrest of Mark Millen, the clutter bug near the Devon Drive girl site, and I believe their trial is scheduled for the 28th.
Can you just state your name and where you live?
364 Devon Drive.
Okay. You know, at this point, it's an active lawsuit, not lawsuit, investigation. We don't want to comment on it. There has been an official, a formal complaint submitted to the police, and we are certainly firing up on the activities and issues that happened during that. And when we complete the investigation, we're going to take the appropriate steps for, you know, deal with whatever we find, whether it was, you know, whatever we find, we'll deal with appropriately based on our investigation, but we're not complete that investigation yet. And I don't want to comment on the arrest when there hasn't been a trial at this point. Any other comments? If you're way in the back, you might need to save some. All right, so then I'll move on to the announcements. January 15, the Environmental Advisory Council Reorganization and Regular Meeting will be held here at 6:30 PM. On January 15, there's a zoning hearing for reorganization, as well as a decision for 27 Kent Drive, and hearings for the B26 Williamsburg Boulevard, rear yard variance will be held at 7:00 PM here. January 16, the Comprehensive Plan Meeting will be held at 3:00 PM here. January 17, the Euclid Township Industrials Development Authority Reorganization and Regular Meeting will be held at 8:30 here. January 21, the Community Day Committee Meeting will be held here at 7:00 PM. February 5 will be the Planning Commission at 7:30 PM here, and then on February 10 will be the Board Supervisors meeting at 7:30 PM here. With that, we move on to any other comments or questions about township business. Again, I would ask that if it's specific to the Eagleview construction proposal, that that has to be held to the hearing after the meeting. Is there any comments or questions?
This is where I usually say all of these meetings are open to the public. Anyone is welcome to come.
If there's no other comments or questions, may I ask permission to return?
I'll make a motion to return. I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. We'll resume in five to 10 minutes.
Good evening, everybody. We're going to start the conditional use hearing now. Initially, I've got to go through a few very mundane topics. I'm going to introduce the issue that we're here to deal with tonight. I'm going to go through some exhibits, and then we'll get to the part where we can talk to folks who may want party status, and I'll explain what that is. I'm going to start out now, so you can think about while I'm proceeding. You don't need party status to comment. There's going to be a period for public comment, where anyone who wants to comment can comment. We'll discuss what party status is, if that's something you want in addition to the ability to be able to comment. Then we'll have the applicant present their case. I understand they have two witnesses tonight, and then we'll open it up to public, folks with party status, and also public comment. So the applicant tonight, and this is, and I also want to announce that this, like the public hearing, like the public meeting, is also being recorded. There's a camera in the back. This is the conditional use application for the Hankin Group Eagleview Apartments at Town Center. The applicant is the Hankin Group, Hankin Enterprises Limited, and 699 Eagleview Associates. The requested relief is the following. The applicant is requesting conditional use approval, which is required for any revision to the Town Center plan. Generally, the applicant is requesting the conditional use to allow for the construction of a four-story building with an underground parking level and 44 apartment units, a 10,000 square foot addition to the existing AC/AC, and a 25,000 square foot recreational area adjacent to the AC/AC. The property is Zoned PCID Planned Commercial Industrial Development. Now, there's three specific conditional uses that are being requested for the record. Again, I know it's mundane, but I'm going to go through them. Specifically, the applicant requests the following conditional use approvals. Number one, Section 508.6. F of the Township Zoning Code provides that a Town Center, as defined in Section 508.11, is a use permitted by conditional use, and therefore, any revision to the existing Town Center plan requires an amendment to the original conditional use order. Number two, Section 508.6.D1 provides that conditional use approval is required for the construction of the new 44-unit apartment building to be at a height of 51 feet. And number three, Section 611.C provides that conditional use approval is required when the total combined parking space count is over 200. The applicant is proposing 100 new spaces, which brings the total to 1,322 parking spaces. Even though the parking count exceeds the required number of spaces, which is 1,310, Hankin Group is also, or the applicant is also requesting approval of a 20% reduction, which is allowed for Section 607.2.E2. So I know that for a lot of folks, that's a lot of mumbo jumbo. Let me, I'm going to try and explain it a different way as well. We're here because the ordinance requires the type of changes that the applicant wants to do. We go through this process that we call conditional use process. If the conditional use is approved, this does not replace the normal land development process, where you go in front of the Planning Commission and the building type and all the various designs and different things that are going to come. This is an added, additional hearing that's required because of the township ordinances. The hearing that we're here to do tonight was advertised twice in the Daily Local. The first time was on Sunday, December 29, 2019, and the second time was Monday, December 6, 2020. It was also posted, and notices were provided to neighbors. One more piece of dry business. I'm going to go through the exhibits that the board supervisors, the township intends to put into the record tonight. There's 13 of them. Exhibit B1, application letter dated December 5, 2019. Exhibit B2, hearing notice to Daily Local. Exhibit B3, proof of publication on December 29, 2019, and January 6, 2020. Exhibit B4, abutting property owner's notification. Exhibit B5, EB Wash review letter dated January 7, 2020. Exhibit B6, McMahon Associates review letter dated January 3, 2020. Exhibit B7, Joe Boldadis review letter dated December 23, 2019. Exhibit B8, police department review memo dated December 19, 2019. Exhibit B9, Fire Marshal, Mike Combs is the township Fire Marshal, Fire Marshal review memo dated December 19, 2019. Exhibit B10, Chester County Planning Commission review letter dated December 20, 2019. Exhibit B11, Planning Commission minutes dated December 4, 2019. Exhibit B12, draft Planning Commission minutes dated January 8, 2020. And exhibit B13, parking allocation plan dated January 10, 2020. With that, I'm going to ask the applicant if they have any objection to these exhibits being entered in the record.
No objection.
All right, they're entered into the record. So at this point, we're now going to move to the issue I mentioned up front, which has to do with party status. Let me explain a little bit about what party status is. As I mentioned at the beginning, you do not need party status in order to make public comment and express your views regarding the project. Party status is available to people who might be impacted by the proposed use, just as commoners may also be impacted. What party status does, it allows people to fully participate in the hearing, it allows them to question witnesses. If there's any kind of briefing, they can submit briefing and other things like that. It allows you to cross-examine witnesses, you can present a case, and you can also testify on the record. As I said before, though, you don't need to be a party to make public comment. One thing to keep in mind is, if you are not a party, if you're not admitted as a party in this proceeding, you can't appeal. However, I do want to emphasize that just because you're a party here doesn't mean you're necessarily going to be allowed to appeal. The standing standards are a little different here, they're a little looser here than they would be if it's appealed up to the Court of Common Pleas. So just because you're a party here doesn't mean you'll be a party in the Court of Common Pleas. However, if you're not a party here, it's going to preclude your ability to appeal up to the Court of Common Pleas. So with that said, with that explanation, and again, I'll just say one more time that while being a party has some of the benefits I talked about, it is not necessary to be a party in order to comment. Are there any folks tonight that would like party status?
Here.
All right, so could I please have your name and address?
Carl and Gail Sonson, S-O-N-E-S-O-N, 616ComstownHeaven.
Would you please spell your last name for me one more time? And do you live in the Eagleview Development?
Yes, we're right across the street from the proposed development area.
And why would you like to be a party in this matter?
I want to follow the development process and see if there's anything you can do to assure our privacy is going to be maintained.
Is there any objection from the applicant?
If I may. Good evening, Allison Zar, behalf of the applicant. We do have a plan, just so I can understand where the property is located. Is the plan in Eagleview? Sir, when you're saying you're in Comstown, could you be a little more, or on Comstown? Could you, I don't know if it's easy to figure this out, but...
All right, our address is Comstown, but the backside is Wharton.
Is it Wharton? Okay, that answers that question for me.
We have a 200 feet of property aligned along the...
I have no objection. And you're the landowner of the property?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Carl and Gail Sonson are admitted as parties. Is there anyone else seeking party status? Yes, sir?
I assume I have no problem seeking party status. I live, I own one of the live work areas, 594 Warren Boulevard, passions for fitness. Basically...
Can I have your name?
Joe Ranson.
How do you spell your last name?
R-E-N-S-O-N. If you want to present your map, I can show you where it is.
It's actually, yeah, I was going to say you're in one of the live work areas. We understand.
Okay.
And you are the owner?
That's correct.
Any objection?
No objection.
All right, well, Mr. Ranson, you're granting party status.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir?
Marty Harold, H-A-R-P-O-L-D.
Good job.
I also own a live work yard as well as a house of room.
Are you at 654 Perimeter Drive?
I'm there, as well as I have a second property there, 646 650 Warren Boulevard.
All right, I should, the township ordinances does require a $20 fee for people seeking party status, you have, doesn't have to be tonight. If anyone wants to change their mind based on that, that's fine. All right, is, all right, excuse me, everyone. Any objection? All right, Mr. Harold, you're granting party status. Yes, in the back?
William Rogers, 510 Voligan Square. That's the Voligan Avenue, I'm the owner, looking directly across to the proposed site.
And what was your first name, I'm sorry?
No, William.
I'm sorry, I, I maybe, so William's your first name?
William Rogers.
Rogers, okay. Okay. Five ten Wellington Square, any objection?
You are the owner?
I am.
No objection.
All right, you're granted party status. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. So at this point, I'm going to turn the proceeding over to the applicant. Those with party status, when after a witness testifies, will have an opportunity to ask questions. And then, once the applicant has completed with their full presentation, anyone with party status, if they choose to, can present a case if, if they want. Do you get more party status?
Sure. My name is Joe Moran, T-R-A-N, it's five nineteen Gramercy Lane.
And you have the honor?
I have the honor.
Any objection?
Are you, are you, is your address in Eagleview?
Yes, it is. It'll be a hundred feet ahead.
That's correct. No objection.
All right, party status. Should we, do you want to swear in the two witnesses now, for one time? Well, I was going to ask, Ms. Zaro, you want to swear in the witnesses? All right, can the witnesses please stand up?
Do you both want to swear or affirm that the testimony will give be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And will you each state your name?
Neil Fisher.
Pierce, good night.
Thank you.
Good evening, Allison Zaro, on behalf of the applicant. As Mr. Freed indicated, there are actually three applicants. It's the Hankin Group, Hankin Enterprises Limited, and sixteen, six ninety-nine Eagleview Associates. These are Hankin entities, and they collectively are the applicant. Throughout the presentation and questioning, we generally will refer to them as Hankin. As Mr. Freed stated, we are here seeking conditional use approval this evening. Conditional use is a permitted use in the zoning ordinance. So this is something that is permitted in the ordinance, and we are required to present testimony to you regarding general, specific standards in the ordinance with respect to the town center. As Mr. Freed noted, this property and the town center have received conditional use approval before, and we are making some changes to that plan, which we will have Mr. Fisher walk through for you this evening. However, the town center use itself encompasses many different uses. It's defined in the zoning ordinance as a mix of different commercial and residential uses, and the uses for which we are seeking approval are subsumed in that town center use and are all part of that permitted use. I did hand up a pre-marked packet of exhibits to the board, and I just want to go through a couple of them procedurally, and then I will ask, then I will call Mr. Fisher first. The first exhibit that I have marked is the conditional use application, submission letter dated December fifth, twenty nineteen, which we have marked as exhibit A one. We have incorporated by reference the Euclid Township zoning ordinance as exhibit A two. I do also have two deeds marked as exhibits A three and A four for the two properties that are specifically, the properties where the requested changes are located within the town center. Those are UPI number thirty-three dash four dash eight and thirty-three dash four dash eight point one zero. The first property, which is located by Hankin Enterprises Limited, is where the changes to the apartment building and parking modifications that we are, we'll talk about are located. The second deed is for six ninety-nine Eagleview Associates, and that is where the ACAC building is located, and that's where the expansion and the proposed future outdoor recreational area would be located. If the board is willing to accept the deeds and evidence that the legal property owners and the Hankin Group have the standing to proceed with the application, I would skip that portion of Mr. Fisher's testimony.
We will accept that.
All right, thank you. First, I'd like to call Neil Fisher, and I know you've been sworn. So Neil, we have marked as exhibit A five your CB, but first, could you state your name for the record and tell me who your employer is and what your position with that employer?
My name's Neil Fisher, Vice President of Development for the Hankin Group. I've been with the Hankin Group for about fifteen years now. I head up all of our land planning, all of the, all of our new projects, all the permitting, all of the, the, the planning that's associated with any new project associated with Hankin.
And Neil, we have marked as exhibit A five just a brief summary of the various projects and your background. Have you testified before this Board of Supervisors and other boards of supervisors and other municipal bodies regarding civil engineering?
I've testified in front of Euclid Township, not in front of this specific board here, but I've testified at Euclid Township on many occasions in the past and in many different municipalities.
And are you also a licensed professional engineer in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
Yes, I am.
I'd like to qualify Neil Fisher as an expert in civil engineering.
Does the board have any questions? Do any of the, the folks with party status have any questions for Mr. Fisher regarding his qualifications? So far.
Thank you. Mr. Fisher, we, we briefly touched on the ownership of the properties, and I referenced the relationship between the Hankin Group and the two legal property owners. Are they all controlled by the same three owners and therefore authorized to proceed with the application?
Yes.
And have you been authorized to appear and make representations on behalf of all three applicants this evening?
Yes.
We have marked as exhibit A six a conditional use plan dated December fifth, twenty nineteen, consisting of nine sheets. Was this prepared by Chester Valley Engineers at your direction?
Yes, it was.
And is exhibit A six the conditional use plan for which Hankin is seeking approval this evening?
It is.
And there's a lot of history on this site. Has the Board of Supervisors, not specifically this board, but the Upper Euclid Township Board of Supervisors previously granted conditional use approval for the town center use along with master concept plans for the town center and various amendments dating back to the early nineties?
The Euclid Township Board of Supervisors have granted several conditional use approvals for this specific tract.
And you're seeking again this evening, as summarized in the opening, to modify that approval?
Yes.
Do you have marked, we have marked as exhibit A seven, sheet one of an NPDS permit plan for commercial building two, prepared by Chester Valley Engineers, Inc., dated October twenty-four, twenty fourteen, and last revised November eleventh, twenty fifteen. To the best of your knowledge, does this reflect the currently approved configuration for buildings, parking, et cetera, in the town center?
Yes, it does.
Referring to exhibit A seven, can you just start out by first identifying where the property is located and walking through what's existing on the property today?
Sure. Can everybody hear me?
No.
Can I just, as people are standing in front of the camera, would you mind just moving a little bit so they're not...
So exhibit A seven was completed as part of retail two for the second, second retail building where the sushi restaurant is, suburban is located within that building. That is actually the last building that we constructed within the town center, and that is the, that is the plan that we're, we're looking at in front of you. So just to kind of get everybody oriented, Rice Boulevard runs in the east-west direction across the top of the cage, and intersects with Pennsylvania Drive on, towards the east, and then Worton Boulevard runs in the north-south direction along the western edge of the property. The bold areas, town center consists of block twenty-one, blocks one and two, which, lot one and two are the live work units that are located on the west side of Worton Boulevard. So that's the mass, that's the corridor of the property. And what exists today, it will start up near the intersection of Pennsylvania Drive and Rice Boulevard, is Meridian, which is a fifty-five in order to one hundred and sixty-two unit apartment building. And then as you continue west, next building is the Potter Building. And it's a, it's an affordable forty-nine unit tax credit senior housing project, apartment building. And then continuing just a little bit further west and north is Bernard Hankin Building, which is also an affordable tax credit project. And that's fifty units. And then continuing west from there, what is a light brown or the tan color is ACAC, and that's approximately twenty-one thousand square feet. The brown, the dark brown portion that's adjacent to it is a future expansion of the fitness center. So basically, what you're starting to see is that the light tan buildings are all existing, and the darker tan or brown buildings are proposed. And I, I'll explain the rest of the buildings here, but when you think about the town center, town center was approved approximately twenty-five years ago, and it was approved as part of that conditional use to create that master plan. We situated the buildings around for our full build-out and the parking associated with our full build-out. And then over time, as, as market conditions permitted, we constructed buildings as we felt to meet those market demands and to bring that vibrancy into the town center. So continuing south along Worton Boulevard, along the, the western side are the live work buildings. Along the eastern side, we have a forty-eight-hundred-square-foot bank with a drive-through, three, a thirty-thousand-square-foot office building. Those are both proposed. And then, on the north side of Wellington Square for the town center, we have retail one and retail two, which are basically the two restaurant buildings. Along the western side of, of Wellington Square is Wellington, which is the forty-eight-unit for sale condo building. And then on the southern side of the square, we have our town center apartments, which consist of seventy-two residential built units.
So looking at this plan, when you're referring to see the light tan buildings, those buildings are the buildings that have been constructed today?
That's correct.
And looking at the brown buildings, those, those buildings and the addition that are shown were previously approved but have not yet been constructed. So when you call them proposed, they are approved buildings that are shown on this plan, is that correct?
That's correct.
And specifically, those brown buildings, starting with ACAC, that is a twenty-thousand-square-foot addition that was previously approved?
Correct.
And the bank you touched on, again, previously approved at forty-eight-hundred square feet, is that correct?
Correct.
And finally, the other building that you pointed out in dark brown, is that an office building that would be thirty thousand square feet?
Correct.
And you're proposing to make some changes to those, is that correct, the ones in brown?
That is correct.
Before we move on from this plan, one final question. You referenced all of the different buildings, you referenced Wellington Square, there's also another area, an open area shown on that plan. Can you address generally what, what's happening on the rest of the site where there are not buildings and parking?
Sure. So the area that we're referring to is the southeastern and even part of the southern portion of town center. And today, that's, it's the area of Worton Dam and the wooded area that extends between Wellington all the way over to West Pharmaceuticals. It's a large wooded tract. That is an area that has been preserved as part of the good town center project. We have a term of leave restriction on that with Natural Land Trust. It permits trails and things of that nature to be constructed within the cove, and we do have a walking trail that connects from Wellington, from Wellington Square over to Hermano West Drive through that area with pedestrian bridges in order to promote a pedestrian connection between some of the commercial areas and town center.
Next, I'd like to turn to a plan we have marked as exhibit A eight, which is a redder landscape plan dated December fifth, twenty nineteen. Was this plan prepared by CBDA at your direction?
Yes, it was.
And does it depict the proposed development for which you're seeking conditional use approval this evening?
Yes, it does.
Referring to exhibit A eight, can you walk through the various changes that are proposed to, and this would then focus on and relate to the brown buildings that we just walked through in that configuration?
So just to worry in everybody again, we have Rice Boulevard, now this time Rice Boulevard is on the left-hand side of the screen, and Worton Boulevard is running along the bottom edge of the plan. The cricket, the grant, basically terminating down at Gramercy Lane. So if we start at Gramercy and we work ourselves to the west, or to the left. So previously, in the location where the proposed three stories, or three stories above parking apartment building is, that's where we previously proposed a multi-story, thirty-thousand-square-foot office building. We are modifying the parking around the building, and this project proposes to construct forty-five parking spaces underneath of the building. We've also modified the parking between Cricket and perimeter within the town center in order to make a better connection from the lower level where the retail areas are to the upper levels where the primary parking area exists for town center. And that's, we did that by eliminating some of the circuitous turns that are associated with the existing parking configuration in town center, making a clean sweep coming up and into those upper levels from the lower level, and then tying Cricket in that new parking drive aisle. And extending along the, the side of Worton Boulevard into town center, we will construct the sidewalk, then we'll interconnect the proposed parking building up towards ACAC. Ultimately, what we want to do is make sure that people have good pedestrian access along Worton Boulevard coming up to what we're designated as a future outdoor recreation area of twenty-five thousand square feet. This is an area where what we're, that we, we're reducing the expansion area for ACAC or the fitness area, basically the fitness center, from twenty thousand square feet to ten thousand square feet. And that gives us space to create a destination area park on the outside of ACAC.
And the, the expansion to ACAC and the future outdoor recreation area, Mr. Freed mentioned earlier that the approvals would have to, the, the conditional use of approved, all these buildings and proposed changes would need to go through land development. Would you propose to do those, the outdoor recreation area and the ACAC expansion potentially as separate land development from the proposed apartments?
They would all be named as separate projects.
Thank you. Referring to exhibit A six...
I just interrupted you for a second, I'm sorry. There was a, a question in the back. So how this is going to work is that they're going to finish the testimony of this witness, and then, once they're completed with the testimony, then anyone with party status will have an opportunity to add. Sorry.
Exhibit A six, which is the conditional use plan prepared by the Chester Valley Engineers, does that contain a zoning compliance chart?
Yes, it does.
And are the proposed changes that you've just outlined in your narrative with respect to exhibit A eight compliant with the town center development requirements and the PCIV district requirements for town center use?
Yes.
Are you also seeking an increase in the maximum height of the... Are you also seeking an increase in the maximum height of the building, which is permitted to be sixty-five feet by conditional use? And when I say the building, specifically the apartment building?
Yes.
And do you have, have you had renderings prepared, including a cross-section of the building, which we have marked as Exhibit Eight-nine, by NOR at your direction?
Yes.
And referring to this rendering, can you explain what the proposed building height is of the apartment building?
The building height will be forty-six feet eleven inches, and that's as defined by the township ordinance, which basically identifies it as the midpoint of the roof to the average grade plane. The average grade plane being a, an average of the grade as it surrounds the building. And as you know from, with this building, there is a difference in elevation between Wharton Boulevard and the town center. So that calculation has been provided.
And the conditional use requested a maximum height of fifty-one feet, is there a reason for the difference in height between what's shown on this rendering and the maximum requested?
We are good with the forty-six feet eleven inches.
And is this maximum height less than other buildings in, that have already been approved and constructed in Eagleview Town Center?
Yes, it is. The, for instance, the Meridian building was approved at sixty-three feet. The town center and the apartments on the square, which are the ones on the south side of the square, they were approved at fifty-eight feet, fifty-eight point three three.
And the Euclid Township zoning ordinance, section five oh eight, period six, period D one, requires that a building of this height be sprinkled and have standpipe systems in accordance with the Euclid Township fire code. Is that proposed as part of this building?
Yes, it is.
Did the township engineer confirm in his review letter dated January seventh, twenty-twenty, which is marked as Exhibit B five, that the proposed height also then the overall town center complies with building coverage and impervious coverage limitations?
Yes, it did.
Okay. Referring to Exhibit A nine, do you also have a couple of other slides that are included in that package, including exterior renderings and a layout? And do you care to walk through those with the board, please?
Could you just zoom in a little bit? Thank you. Okay, just to worry in everybody associated with the layout rendering, here is Wharton Boulevard over on the left, Wellington Square is on the right-hand side of the page. And here you can see a conceptual layout for residential units and where they would be located within the building. You can also see that they, they center on a above-ground deck that would be used as a courtyard area for those units. And it's basically designed to create a front door that aligns with the town square. So the town square was designed with pathways that run, run through the square. What we wanted to do, and it's the same thing we did with Wellington, is those pathways directly aligned with the stairs and they, basically the gateway into that unit. So with Wellington, the, the front door is directly aligned with that pathway. And we did the same thing here, where the pathway comes across, aligns with the steps that go up and create that space, and create that space for the enjoyment of residents. We've also prepared an exterior rendering, this one is exterior rendering two, and this is looking down that path from, from the square, looking towards the proposed apartment building. You can see that there are, there's steps going up and into that courtyard, that upper-level courtyard area. Our exterior rendering one is more of a bird's eye view, looking down towards, towards that central courtyard, also from the square side. So you have the steps that come up, the courtyard area, the building, the balconies. The architecture of the building is designed very similar to the architecture of buildings that exist within the town center. We very much wanted to make sure that the building is integrated with the existing buildings. So for instance, you'll see a lighter color on the base where the garage is located. That's aerospace craft, and that's the same type of material that is used on both Wellington and Meridian in those, their garage areas. And then the portions above the aerospace craft is brick and then going into the roof structure. The roof structure itself is designed so that it looks like a pitched roof, just like the other buildings within town center. But in fact, there is a well that resides in the center of the roof, and that's where we will put the HAC equipment, equip the mechanical equipment, so it's out of view from any of the surrounding areas.
Next, I'd like to turn to parking requirements, specifically for the apartment building. How many spaces are required for the apartment building under Euclid Township's ordinance?
Two and a half parking spaces per unit. For, for a, a forty-four unit building, a hundred and ten parking spaces.
And are you providing the total required parking of a hundred and ten spaces?
Yes, we're achieving that.
Okay. Now, Hankin did seek conditional use approval pursuant to section six oh seven two E two to permit a reduction in the required parking by up to twenty percent, which is allowed by the ordinance. And is it correct that that is specifically related to the non-residential uses?
That is correct. So what we're, so what we're proposing is to- So what's required from a parking standpoint for all the uses that exist within town center, and not only what exists, but also what is being proposed? The number works out to one thousand three hundred and ten parking spaces. As part of this plan and the modifications to the parking, what will be proposed or what will be provided is one thousand three hundred and twenty-two for more parking than what is actually required. The reason that we've requested the, this section of the conditionally, through conditional use, is really in line with the Chester County Review Letter. So basically, what the county is saying, we understand that there is a mix of uses that are occurring within town center, and we also understand that there is a sharing that will occur. And what they, they say is, what you could do is place some of those parking spaces in reserve, make sure that you have space on the plan to provide for them, and then but what, but not necessarily building, because what nobody wants is to have additional parking or parking that is sitting empty just for a parking lot. It'd be better to have that area as green and leave that space available, so should a parking demand arise in the future, those spaces would be provided. The conditional, if, if granted, we would work with the township during the land development process to identify the best locations for those spaces to be placed in reserve.
And as it stands today, you have constructed the required parking that was shown on the previous plan that you touched on. So the parking today is slightly more out there, that parking field is slightly more, and even with these parking modifications, you would still be able to meet that full required parking for the residential, and this twenty percent would just be for the non-residential.
That's correct.
Next, I'd like to turn to generally applicable conditional use standards, and these apply to conditional uses in, any conditional use in the township, not just the town center. Those are set forth in section eight oh six point four of the zoning ordinance. Have you had an opportunity to review those conditional use standards?
Yes, I have.
And in your opinion, does the application comply with those standards?
Yes, we do.
I'd like to hit on just a few of them specifically and walk through some additional exhibits. One of the conditional use standards provides that Hankin can provide a contribution in lieu of completing a physical impact study to the township, and is that something that Hankin would be proposing as part of this application?
Yes, we will.
Are you proposing any, and you touched on this briefly, but are you proposing specific landscaping in connection with this proposed change to the town center?
Yes, we are. We'll comply with the township, the township landscape ordinance as, as it relates to town center. Really, what it comes down to is every road in Eagleview is designed with a specific streetscape, and it's to engage the building and the architecture of the building with the road that it, it's designed to run on. And that will be no different for this project as it was anywhere else in Eagleview.
Will the proposed changes meet the requirements of the township subdivision and land development ordinance?
Yes, it will.
We have marked as Exhibit Eight-ten, a stormwater management and utility narrative dated December fifth, comma, twenty nineteen. Was this prepared at your direction?
Yes, it was.
And can you briefly explain what's proposed in terms of stormwater management with these changes?
So Eagleview as a whole is, is primarily controlled by centralized stormwater management facilities. Because this is a master plan community, we designed stormwater to handle rate control thirty-five years ago. And so those, and we constructed that infrastructure early on in the development. So the rate control was already met. We, we designed from a rate control standpoint for the full build-out of Eagleview. From an infiltration standpoint, this, which is a newer stormwater requirement, that is something that we will, we will manage as part of the land development process. So we'll construct underground infiltration beds to handle the infiltration requirements.
And your proposed water quality measures, infiltration, et cetera, that's consistent with other existing and approved stormwater quality measures in Eagleview?
Yes. And it'll be consistent with EP requirements.
And will an NPS permit be required for this project?
It will.
And you will meet the requirements for that NPS?
Yes, we will.
Exhibit A eleven is a water availability letter from Aqua Pennsylvania dated December seventeenth, twenty nineteen. Have you reviewed this letter?
Yes, I have.
And does it confirm that water is available to serve the proposed development?
Water is available.
And that would be supplied by Aqua?
Yes, it will.
Exhibit A twelve, which is also marked as Exhibit, Exhibit B seven, is a memorandum from Joseph Baldass, the sewer system engineer for the township, dated December twenty-third, twenty nineteen. Does that memorandum note that this, there is public sanitary sewer service available and capacity available for the proposed development?
It confirms that Hankin owns over a hundred and seventeen thousand gallons of sewer capacity in the sewer treatment plant, and that this project is approximately six thousand six hundred gallons. So we have more than adequate capacity.
Did you also have an environmental impact assessment dated December fifth, twenty nineteen, prepared by Marathon Engineering and Environmental Services?
Yes.
And was this prepared at your direction to meet the requirements of the township ordinances with respect to environmental impact?
Yes.
Assessment? Does Exhibit A thirteen confirm that the property is free of environmental contamination and/or hazardous materials or waste as defined in section five eleven of the township subdivision and land development ordinance?
Yes, it does.
Have you also had a chance to review the township consultant review letters, which are marked as Exhibits B five through B nine, which Mr. Freed referenced earlier?
Yes.
And is Hankin able to comply with the comments in those review letters?
Yes.
One of those comments in the Township Traffic Engineer Review Letter, which is marked as Exhibit B six, comment sixteen B, references certain movements to the garage access for the proposed apartment building. And I would ask you whether you've come up with a solution to address those comments and explain what that is.
Yes, two things. One, what we're, what we're looking, and what we're talking about is opposite of Cricket, the intersection with the driveway and the suite, the, which is a one-way into town center, as if you're traveling, we, we, this is north, northbound on Wharton Boulevard. So basically, if you're traveling northbound, there's a radius, Wharton Boulevard is designed with a radius that comes around. And in order to make the intersection function conveniently for travelers, we installed a, a right-in, in addition to a bi-directional directly opposite of Cricket. And then we have our garage driveway coming in shortly thereafter. What we've agreed to do is to shift the building slightly uphill on Wharton to make sure that there is adequate staging for a vehicle to sit in within the drive aisle, should the doors be closed, if there's a spot for them to, a vehicle to sit, in addition to convert the yield sign into a stop sign so that people, if they're coming into town center, will be forced to stop prior to coming into the more active zone from the town center.
And finally, did you appear before the Township Planning Commission to present this application, and did the Township Planning Commission make a recommendation on this application?
Yes, they did. They recommended approval, and they voted and made that recommendation and supervised.
Thank you. I have no further questions for Mr. Fisher. I will say that we do have a traffic engineer that will be providing testimony for, so for those that may be asking questions, we will be addressing traffic.
Thank you very much. Does the board have any questions?
I have a few questions. When you mentioned the bank forty hundred square feet, do you have a bank identified or do you plan to then offer that?
Okay, the bank was on the previous master plan, and what we're looking to do with this master plan is remove that bank and not, no longer construct it.
When you mentioned the parking spaces and you said that you have a thousand twenty-two hundred, twenty-two hundred spaces, are you including the spaces on the street or is this all off-street spaces?
Well, it's, so when town center was approved, it was, Wharton Boulevard was part of town center. There's parking, there's parallel spaces that are located on Wharton Boulevard are included in the calculation, in the same manner as previous applications.
Maybe you said this, are there any plans to widen the streets or will the current streets stay the way they are?
Current streets will stay the way they are. The town center was master planned, and therefore, all, all of the proposed uses, the apartment, it was, the streets and the infrastructure was put in town center for full build-out. That's why, you know, there's sewer laterals, there are water laterals associated with this building. The, the roads were designed to handle the traffic associated with a proposed development in these locations.
I had a question about the stop sign that you mentioned, and maybe our traffic engineer can explain this. You mentioned changing the yield sign to a stop sign. To me, that seems like it would slow traffic down. Is that the intent then to slow the speed?
It is. It's, so the idea is to want to stop people coming into town center. There's a lot of people that are in town center and we want to make sure that we create a safe environment. So by creating, taking that movement, a stop control, as you enter into town center, we will be traffic calming.
Someone related to that, having been in this area quite a few times, I know that to walk down from along Wharton Boulevard to where it's suburban is now, is sometimes a little bit of a blind spot with, you know, if you're walking with families who aren't walking, it's a little bit hard for cars to come sweeping up. Is there any, I, it's hard for me, so along, no, no, when you're going down from the upper parking lots down to the lower parking lots.
This area?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I'm glad you brought that up, because I was afraid that that may not have come across as well as I wanted it to. I'm gonna, I'm gonna refer back to Exhibit A seven, which is- I'm going to refer back to Exhibit A7, which is basically an existing features plan. It's showing what buildings exist, what was previously proposed, and the street and the parking arrangement. I agree with you that that, the area next to Suburban, or here's the retail 2 is where Suburban is located. And there is a four-way intersection directly adjacent to Suburban. So to get to the upper parking, which is primarily where the bulk of the parking for Town Center exists, you have to, you have to come in and you have to make almost a 90-degree turn and then a second 90-degree turn to get up to the upper levels. That's where I say it's a circuitous route to get from the lower level to the upper level. And I think a lot of people do get frustrated in trying to figure out, hey, I'm down here, I want to get up there and end up down on Warden Boulevard. Or say, hey, you know what, I'm going to go to another place to eat. That's certainly not the goal. So as part of this project, we want to, we're proposing to fix that. So the main, the main, so here's Suburban and the main connector from the lower level to the upper level is a smooth transition, no longer that circuitous route, getting from the lower level to the upper level of, sorry, upper level into those parking stalls.
Now, is that a sidewalk that we're talking about, the pedestrian walk along there? Can you point out where the sidewalks are?
Okay, so along, sidewalks proposed as part of this project are along Warden Boulevard, where they do not exist today. And then a sidewalk from Suburban up into the upper sidewalks, the upper level sidewalk network. So it'll be on both sides of that connector coming down through.
Thank you.
So pedestrian, if there was a park or recreational area, and I'm assuming that's public, not just for ECA members?
Oh, that's correct. It would be, so Town Center is a destination location. People driving down the road aren't saying, I want to go to the restaurant that's located there. They're not driving down Rice Boulevard, Warden Boulevard and saying, I'm going to come to Town Center. Town Center is designed, is, Town Center serves many purposes. One, it serves as a great transition from our commercial buildings over to residential neighborhoods and two, but the restaurants and the uses that are contained in Town Center today, people are going there based on, for a reason. And that's why I mean by it's destination-driven. So they're coming here to go to that. This future outdoor, this outdoor recreation area, our goal is to make that a destination-type park so that people will come to that park, depending on, you know, whether their spouse works in an office building. I'll meet you there for lunch, let's go over, let's get something to eat, we'll let the kids play at the recreation area. So it's designed to bring people into the Town Center, use the facilities. It's certainly a amen to the community, it's a amen for the Township and it's a amen for us.
So as far as pedestrians, let's say you do park over there by the park and you've got a stroller or somebody that you needed the ADA accessible, how does someone get, if they wanted to go down to the green pedestrian lanes?
So as part of this project, so today there exists sidewalk along, in front of the proposed outdoor recreation. We will run sidewalk down along Warden Boulevard and then connect into the existing sidewalk network that is on the south side of Town Center, which goes down, all the way down through Eagleview, down Warden Boulevard and over to other parks.
There's a little bit of stairs, because there are those stairs to get up a lot down.
There will not be stairs associated with the sidewalk along Warden. You are correct that we have stairs. It's basically a shortcut from the upper level parking down to the lower level. But in addition to this sidewalk, we are also proposing a sidewalk to connect the lower level sidewalk in front, basically where this outdoor seating exists, along our new connector drive eye to the upper level parking where the sidewalk exists in the front of the upper level of the buildings. So it'll create, and that grade is actually roughly four and a half percent. So it is less than ADA requirements from the upper level to the lower level.
So when I look at this player and I look at, listen to what you say about, you know, the preservation of the naturalist open space on the southeastern corner, and then I look at what else is available, would you consider if this were, do you consider this a fully-built-out plan then?
I would consider, yes. So listen, we're a, we're a long-term vision company, right? I plan to, not me, plan to be here for 50 years. However, I plan for the company to be here for 50 years. And, you know, and in 50 years, you know, in the future, uses are going to change. People are going to function differently. Offices are going to function, you're going to function differently as you go to work. The goal with Town Center is to make sure that we, make it sure that it is adaptable to those changing needs. So in the future, if we, we have cars that are floating in the air, we got to do something differently, then of course, and that's, we'll be back and talking to the Township.
Of course, but what I'm saying is in the medium term future before we're
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So who would be responsible for maintaining the stormwater infrastructure associated with this project? The Township or?
No. So stormwater is centralized stormwater and the Eagleview Town Center and the Town Center Association handles that.
You mentioned how, you know, you built, started managing stormwater 35 years ago. And of course, this area's had an extraordinary increase in rain that's been
Twenty-six.
Yeah, twenty-six plus twenty-six for this year and it's been consistent for, I think, 20 years, we've been about normal. Is there any thoughts that stormwater, the original philosophy of stormwater management needs to be improved?
And it is. So the rate control concepts are still the same, but what has changed between when the original zoning went in and what today is infiltration? So yes, we recognize that that is a new requirement, it's a DEP requirement, certainly it's a Township requirement. And this project will not only do the stormwater that we were required to do years ago, but in addition to that, we will comply with the new rules and regulations, those we just were in DEP.
Dan? Any more questions? So I just have one question. Are you proposing any change in the zoning designation for the area?
No.
Do any of the folks that have party status want to ask questions? Okay, I'd ask for you to come up and state your name and then ask your questions.
My name's Joe Brandon, 510 Gramercy. There will not be any signs limiting parking to the apartment buildings, I assume, since...
You're correct.
Okay. So if anybody comes into Restaurant Row or anything, even concerts, they can park wherever they want.
That's correct.
So, which would limit the available parking to the proposed apartment building. Is that correct? If visitors to the Town Center, such as Restaurant Row, concerts or whatever, if they park in that light area, then in effect, the available parking for the proposed apartment building will not be there.
That is not correct. So Town Center, Town Center as a whole is, we look at, you look at it from...
Oh, hold on, let him answer your question, then you'll have a follow-up.
So Town Center as a whole is required, is required to have a certain number of parking spaces associated with all the uses. It is a shared parking facility. All the uses share the parking facilities. We study this and we study everything and we want to make sure that when we come in and we build a building, that there's not going to be an adverse impact. We have studied parking and you'll hear shortly from our traffic consultant. As part of that study, what we do is we went out there and did traffic counts. We did traffic counts on Sundays and on Fridays. And basically what that says is that in our peak hour, the number of parking spaces that are filled in Town Center is 604 parking spaces. And that's, so, so out of the 1,200 parking spaces that exist out there today, only half of them are occupied in the peak hour. So there's not a parking problem in Town Center.
If I might. The people who would live in this proposed apartment, they expect parking to be fairly nearby. Everybody would want that. There's some underneath the building, not enough, but a little bit, there's some there. And then they would expect to park either the Friday or the side, all that light area. It very well may happen that there won't be any parking here because the people in restaurants, oh, they're going to park there. It's going to be filled up. So then the planned or proposed parking for the building, it'll be there, but it's going to be up in a dark area. Mr. Fisher, were you involved with the effort 10 years ago with the hotel?
I was.
Do you recall what happened as a result of the effort to have the hotel approved?
We withdrew, sorry, we withdrew our application.
Is it a fact, is it a fact that the reason why it was withdrawn is because of parking problems? Because the parking for the proposed hotel was up on the upper level? People who would go to the hotel, they couldn't park around the hotel and they would have to go to the top?
That is not true.
Or they'd park on Warden Boulevard?
I would disagree with all of those characterizations.
Okay.
But either, but just so we're clear, that use is not part of this application.
You're correct. What I've seen is similarity. There was a big hotel like that. That's gone, it was, it just wasn't working out. Parking and whatever the other part, primary parkings, I recall. So then years ago, like 10 years ago, like, now we're back with another building, a hotel, it's an apartment building, with the same highs and problems, parking.
Is there a question?
Yes. The question was, can anybody park where it's shown there in the white areas? Any answer is yes. And then my observation on that is, well, then any claim here by parking for the building is not going to be here possibly. And the other question is, can apartment residents park on Warden Boulevard, Gramercy Lane, Cricket, if there is no other parking nearby, and are they going up to the upper level? Are they allowed to go there? The parking residents?
Yes.
Would it be correct? You can't, you cannot put a sign there either.
So Cricket, Gramercy, Perimeter Drive, Warden Boulevard, they are all designed with on-trip parking, well, Warden Boulevard has parking on both sides, but the other roads are designed with parking on one side.
Correct. So that department?
So there is not a limitation as to who can park or where, but realistically, it would make no sense for an apartment resident to park on Gramercy, Cricket, or Perimeter Drive.
Hold on, everybody. This is a flexing answer, that's all, we don't...
Okay.
Yes, sir.
My name's Joe Brandon and I live in 514 Warden Boulevard. My concern during proposed apartment building 3, where do my customers park? Because I would assume that the proposed apartment building 3, people would park on that parallel, not from the trees. Have you, what concession have you made for that?
So the people associated with parking, this proposed apartment, apartment building are designed to park underneath of the building because there's garage parking.
Fair enough.
Okay. Then we are adding parking from Suburban up and around to increase the number of parking spaces in and around the proposed park building.
Well, I've been, I've been having my passion for fitness for 12 years. So I've been in Eagleview for 12 years and resigned in three and a half years. You don't live there, right?
I do not live in Eagleview.
Do you realize the capacity of people on Friday, Saturday, Tuesday, the events? I mean, it is, it is. Here's my concern, I have a, I have a, do you have children?
I do.
How old do you want them? I'm just, do you mind?
Fifteen, seven.
Okay. I have an infant and I have a two-year-old. Twice, my little infant, I literally, this is, I live right across, so, and you have to figure out how to, because now the cars are starting to accelerate on Warden Boulevard. So that's going to start to progress each time. My son almost got hit by a car. My, and I, literally, when I was walking my son, twice, twice, I quarter, quarter of the way, my wife pushes a little stroller, a little two-year-old, maybe he's 35, 36 pounds, and a little engine in the front. My wife got stuck in the middle of the room because there was a young kid accelerating, me, maybe me, it was a little young kid, he was probably not two years. If you don't mind me asking really quick, what's the demographics going to be under the apartment?
I think, I would anticipate primary demographics being split really between millennials and move down to...
Millennials?
Millennials and move down to...
That's a concern because my, my wife got caught in the middle of the street. And as you know, listen, I was walking with my wife.
Is there a question?
It is. I'm just asking a question. I'm just following up with some, some, I missed a lot.
It's time for questions.
Okay, then here's, okay, can somebody finish their statement? Ma'am, do you have kids?
Sir, if you have a question?
You have children, this is becoming dangerous. With an infant, six-year-old and a two-year-old, ma'am? And you understand that? So this is, I understand all your proposals, but the reality is, this is becoming dangerous. Not even for the people that have dogs and from elderly and you've got senior people. So now, you know, that's when you get older, you're taking care of your seniors. Now they're out there walking at 85 years old with dementia.
All right, there's that, thank you.
It's not funny. This is serious, this is serious.
Understand.
And I need you guys that are living in this community, I've been here for 12 years. The question is, again, I'll reiterate it, how can you account for the danger that this is proposing? And I mean this with... Now, you understand at 15, 17 years old, you've seen them grow up and they're out there and they're growing and eventually they're going to, they're going to expand and have children and you're going to be a grandfather. And you're going to understand that too. What happens if they get hurt? What is the concession you're making, Township? And I want you to check yourselves, no offense, that the danger this is potentially proposing. Please, that is my question. Because I understand the revenue stream and I understand everything you're trying to need here, but this is a serious question.
We do have a traffic engineer that is going to provide test.
Okay. That is, it's getting more dangerous.
Hold on a second, hold on a second. Close. This is an opportunity for personal party status to ask a question.
I'm concerned.
Understood. If you have a question, we've got a lot of people here, I'm sure there's a lot of people that want to make comments. So let's ask the questions of the witnesses and then we can move on.
I, she, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't really get it. That answer didn't compute, I'm sorry. What was the question? What was the answer to the question?
The witness wants to...
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
Yeah, I think you can ask.
Do you want me to, let me ask it again?
Yes, please.
What concessions are you making for the potential danger that because this is becoming more popular, there's more vehicles, there's more dangers, now you're saying it's more millennials? What is the concession you're making for the abstract propositions that could possibly happen?
I don't mean to be difficult, but I do not understand the danger that you're asking me to talk about.
The danger with vehicles speeding in Warden Boulevard and passing stop signs. They're not, they're not honoring the stop, and I see the cop cars and they're sometimes in the morning and obviously there's a payroll, but you guys have been helping these cars sitting out here. So that has to be justified by the Township to support that. These guys...
So just so that we're clear, so you're asking me how, how am I, what am I proposing to do to get people to comply with stop signs and traffic control devices that are put in place?
No, that's not the question.
Not the question?
If my wife gets hit by a car, how can we prevent that?
I'm sorry, but I don't believe that that is an answer to the question.
Well, what hap, it's hypothetical, it's, it's... Well, what hap, it's hypothetical, it's, it's a question. How can we prevent my family pushing, I say, my, my son is now probably thirty-five year, thirty-five pounds, and my infant baby, so that stroller becomes heavier to cross the street, and there's, you got more traffic, so how can we, how can we prevent that?
All right, I think, I think you answered your question, I think you made your point. Any other questions?
Is that it?
Is that, okay. Any other questions?
I have two questions. First, big question I have, the first one is, why are you building?
You know, I'm glad that you asked that. So, here's, here's how I would explain that. So Town Center is a huge amenity for Eagleview, correct? It's an amenity for the corporate center, it is an amenity for the residents, and it is why Eagleview is strong and healthy. And so why we're proposing this is because we believe that this is the best way to continue with those amenities, and to make the Town Center strong and vibrant, and to bring people in, and just so that there are people to utilize the retails, the retail uses in Town Center, so that they stay occupied and they stay vibrant. So I believe that it is more of a holistic approach to Town Center and to Eagleview as a whole. It is not a specific, meant as a specific project, but rather, as it relates to the whole for us.
So the apartment building is an amenity for us that already live there?
So, no. So, it's because you have to understand, I'm asking you to understand how the businesses, the businesses function, because it's not just the residents.
I own a business there and a residence, so.
So you have employees.
Twenty-six years I've been living there, very well aware of the whole grand scheme of, you know, the Eagleview. I said at the settlement table with Bernie, hey?
Great.
I built my house, so, I have a lot of experience there. Next question. Is Meridian full?
Yes.
Totally full?
Yes.
Claremont?
Yes.
There's no available?
We run in less than five percent vacancy.
So it's not full? The Town Center apartments?
It's full. I'm sorry.
Town Center apartments?
Full.
It's not full.
They're totally full as well?
Anything less than five percent vacancy is considered full, because you're always gonna have people that move in, move out, and there's gonna be transition periods. So, yes, I would consider them full.
Okay. And, how many spaces are underneath the building?
Forty-five.
Forty-five. And there's two and a half per residence needed?
The orders requires two and a half parking spaces per resident. Per apartment.
Per apartment. Okay. You mentioned earlier you were gonna forego something, I missed, you were gonna make a contribution to the Township for, by fore, for, forgoing something?
There's a section in the orders that requires, or that states that a fee may be made to the Township in lieu of a fiscal impact study.
And how much was that?
It has not been that.
Any idea?
That's something that was.
You've done this before?
I have, and it is something that is decided during the land development process, based on the amount of.
Is it a thousand dollars, is it a hundred thousand? Any idea?
No idea.
You mentioned also earlier about the stormwater retention for a future. Could you point out where those proposed retention basins would be, or underground retention?
Underground retention would occur underneath existing and proposed parking areas.
That we're looking at now?
Correct.
So that would have an impact on the available spaces, correct? Why that construction is going on?
Yes.
You'd have to dig up the parking lot, dig up it, put in your, all your manifolds, everything?
That's correct.
So, okay. And again, could you, my very first question again, could you just repeat what you said about why you're building this?
Because we believe that it strengthens Town Center.
So the Town Center is weak right now, we need to?
We need to, we need to constantly, we constantly look and evaluate the uses within the Town Center, and throughout Eagleview as a whole, and figure out how to make sure that Eagleview stays strong and healthy. And this is our proposal to do that.
But I bet if you asked the residents, and it'd be easy to do, you could send them all a letter, what they thought about, and if they feel that Eagleview needs to be enhanced by adding forty-four apartments, a hundred more people, let's say, let alone all the cars, I don't think they would agree with you. I know you find that hard to, but is this finding good faith?
It's kinda like me asking you, hey, would you ask me for permission to put a deck on the back of your house?
I would have to. I've asked both my neighbors, and I've asked the Township to do that. First protocol, I mean, you have, so, you haven't taken into consideration, I guess, the Eagleview residence is really worth it.
I would disagree with you, because I think. I would disagree with you, because I think by the planning that we do as a company to make sure that not only does the Town Center stay strong and healthy, and does the corporate center stay strong and healthy, that it is all things that are good for the residents of Eagleview.
I would disagree with you. You don't live there, you don't see the impact on Tuesday nights, Wharton Boulevard is packed, all the way down past the soccer field, Gramercy, Cricket, every one of those roads perimeter is packed with cars, both sides of the road.
All right, there are no other, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for party status? Work.
Question.
One question.
Has it been considered thoroughly whether the building should be there, or whether the building should be up in the corner? If it's with the building there, we lose our grass, the kids, the patio, all of that. The area up in the corner would allow a building that size, would be a problem. Plus parking, I have, if I may, can I answer?
Is he providing testimony?
Yes, this, this question resulted in this.
Objection, is he providing testimony to that at that time?
My question is.
Hold on a second. What was the objection?
If, if he's providing testimony, is he authenticating the argument?
Well, let him, let him ask, let him ask a question, and then.
It seems that that area up in the corner, I can pass some of these out to, it's large enough to fit that building, or maybe a little bit smaller than that building. It's big enough to fit the large apartment building that presently is in the Town Center, the largest of the two, larger of the two. Up in the corner, it'll fit, and there's space there for seventy spots, seventy parking spaces. And then we can keep our grassy area, and we keep the open area. I think most people are here. It's very upsetting to everybody to lose what we like so much, and what we regard as being necessary for the enjoyment. So the question is, can that be considered? My thought is maybe just kind of focus right on where it is now, without putting really much effort into the alternative location.
All right, Mr. Moran, let's let him answer.
Where we place buildings and how we place buildings, the architecture, how they integrate in with the environment, is nothing that we take lightly. The square in Town Center was always designed to be a square with buildings on all four sides. And that is why we're looking to continue with that concept, complete the square, and complete the construction in the Town Center.
Mr. Moran, can I ask a couple questions about this? And I'm gonna call this Moran one, if that's okay? Is, where's this photograph from?
That's from the Chester County tax parcel map, sorry. Chester County, except that.
You printed this off yourself?
And then I copied it.
And, and then the, it looks like some of the areas are colored in, did you do that?
I did.
And, and the designations, F1, F2, CBE, that, that's your designation?
Those are on the map. Those are the county, or Town Center plan. Each of these buildings has a number, written letters. A being where the upper part of the corner, and then B is where the CBE.
Is that your handwriting? The D, the DCE?
It is.
Okay, and also the, where you have the seventy spaces that you drew that in?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
And the three ones are exactly the same size as that larger, the two apartment buildings in Town Center, which I did not see this thing, I don't know how big this is gonna be, or maybe a bit like that. So, then, my question is, is it possible to reconsider this, to put that building, or a similar building up in that corner, and let us keep our grassy area in that open town center? Is that possible?
Again, I will say this, it is the master plan area, and the idea is to create the square that is fronted on all four sides of the building, located, the parking centrally located in the northern portion of the property.
I couldn't hear the last part. Or was it located on the bottom?
The.
Centrally located.
On the northern, northwestern portion of the property.
One more question, sir.
I think I, you know, we're gonna allow the witness now, I really, we're gonna allow the, the council to redirect the witness. I understand, but everyone, we have to do this in an early, worldly fashion. There's gonna be other witnesses, there's gonna be a time for public comment as well. I'm gonna ask.
If this is a witness that can answer my question, we'll have to use traffic guard.
I'm gonna ask council to redirect, and then we. Was there another party that?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you ask one more?
Let's let the party dozen have a chance.
I have none adversarial question.
Who, go back to the color picture.
The open recreation area is in addition to ACAC? How will that be used?
It's not in addition to ACAC, how would the addition to ACAC?
The addition to the green area.
Oh. How will it be used? It's, so, the idea is to create a destination park, something that will attract people to come in to utilize play equipment, to bring their kids here so that they can go and relax, that's what they.
It's a public area?
Yes.
And it's just adjacent to the parking lot?
Correct.
Sir, I'm gonna let you ask, don't make me regret it, though, okay? One question.
One more question, sir. With the proposed building, if it goes up, I mean, did you take into consideration that the liver units on the, to the right of the picture are totally gonna be obstructed, they have no view whatsoever of the Town Center? When we purchased those units, that was all left clear, they had no proposal for any four-story building to be put there, it was for a bank they talked about at one time. But if you even considered that, because that's totally, I mean, if you're trying to sell those units now with that building there, you'd have a tough time. And as a retailer and a business owner there, we struggle to get people to come to that location. You even said it yourself, it's a destination community. As a retail, not a destination business, but somebody who counts on foot traffic and people seeing our business, it's totally gonna be obscured.
That's true.
Okay, so first of all, the bank was not, was never proposed in that location.
No, the bank was not.
The bank was proposed for.
And that was, that was a forty feet high.
And then there was multi-story office building proposed in the location of this apartment building, and that would have been on your plan when you did purchase your, your unit.
It was future development, I realize that, but the difference between an office building and apartment? People leave, they're not there on the weekends. So they come in at nine in the morning, they go to work, hopefully someone would take a bus or something, if you get that approved, to bring them in there. So those people aren't living there, they're working there, so why, why are you going from the apartments to the other? You look at Exton, all over, there's apartments everywhere. I'm also a realtor with Berkshire Hathaway, and I can tell you, everybody wants to be in Eagleview, but we don't need anybody else, it's already a mess getting in there. You come there five o'clock at nine twenty, you're there.
All right, thank you. Council, you have any redirect?
Yeah, I think you've covered essentially everything we've talked about, but I do wanna just reiterate a couple of things, or make sure that they're clear. With respect to parking, we are going to have a second witness that's going to talk about a parking reallocation plan, but you touched on a few things. There is a large parking field in Eagleview, and that parking, the surface parking is not assigned, is that correct?
That's correct.
But there are also garage spaces associated with various residential buildings. That parking is specific to each building in which the garage resides or is connected to, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then finally, referring back to Exhibit 87, you've touched on this a couple of times, but I think it's worth just briefly going through again the, the streetscape on Wharton Boulevard and what was previously proposed there, and specifically in the area that seems to be of concern with respect to the apartment building. Could you explain specifically what that office building was and what you would be able to do today? I know you refer to it as proposed, but it is an approved building, is that correct?
That is correct.
Based on the footprint that's there, the size of the building, it would also be a three-story above, above, basically having, holding, maintaining the finished floor elevation associated with Wharton Boulevard. So, recognizing that the finished floors would be equal and three stories up from that point, the residential building is actually lower in height because you don't need the floor-to-floor clearance, whereas if a, an office building, you're talking fourteen to fifteen foot floor-to-floor, a residential building, you're talking more along the lines of eleven to twelve feet.
And finally, with respect to your proposal and the viability of the Town Center, you've touched on various things I wanted to keep it vital, as part of that, the synergy between all of the different uses, and was Eagleview Town Center always contemplated to have a mix of residential uses, and that would that be in keeping with the definition of Town Center and the zoning ordinance, and what is permitted by the zoning ordinance? I have no further questions for Mr. Fisher.
Thank you. Do you wanna move your Exhibits A1 through A14 in?
Uh, A13, yes.
Eight, okay. Are there any objections to the Exhibits from any of the parties?
No objection.
Any objection from the? Just, we're just, we're done with the testimony, we're just doing the Exhibits.
I do have another witness.
Yeah, no, I understand. All right, so the A1 through A13 are admitted, and then, there was also Moran one, is there any objection? Have you admitted that, Doc?
No objection.
All right, that's submitted as well? All right, thank you, Mr. Fisher. Council, you wanna call your next witness?
Sure. Next, I'd like to call Peter Spizak, he's also been sworn. Peter, can you state and spell your name for the record, please?
Peter Spizak, S.P.I.S.S.C.A.K.
And Mr. Spizak, who is your employer, and what is your position with that employer?
I'm currently a Senior Project Manager of Traffic Planning Design.
And we do have Mr. Spizak's CBI mark as Exhibit 813. Peter, could you just give a little bit about your background? I know you are not a traffic engineer, but I understand you're a traffic planner.
That's correct, I'm a certified planner, I have about twenty years' experience in the field of traffic study, parking study, it has anything to do with transportation planning.
And have you testified before other municipal bodies, including local municipal bodies regarding transportation planning, and been accepted as an expert in transportation planning in those municipalities?
Yes, and most recently, a question.
I'd like to offer Mr. Spizak as a, an expert in transportation planning.
Does the board have any questions regarding Mr. Spizak's qualifications? Do any of the parties have any questions, just about qualifications?
Yeah, yeah. Is it traffic expert or transportation?
Transportation planning.
It's a.
Well, traffic, part, it's all encompassing.
Hold on a second.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and that was, I'm sorry, Mr. Harwell, that asked a question?
Right. I have a question.
Just about qualifications?
Parking and garden.
Just about qual, we're gonna get to, so if you have a question about Mr. Spizak's application, whether he qualifies as an expert, okay. So then, what's gonna happen is he's gonna testify, and then you'll have an opportunity to get into subsequent questions about traffic and parking.
Thank you.
So he is accepted as...
Yeah, accepted as...
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Spizak, are you familiar with the subject property? Its features, the applicant's proposal and the surrounding area?
Yes.
Um, and was your firm, Traffic Planning and Design, responsible for the preparation of a transportation impact study dated December 5th, 2019?
Yes.
Um, and can you explain briefly for the record what the purpose of a transportation impact study is and what specifically you were looking at with respect to this application?
Sure, so, as far as the traffic study is concerned, first step is to scope the study out with the township, township engineer, which is basically tells us what intersections to look at, what we need to focus on as far as the analysis, um, for the, for the study. We did that, we have looked, the township engineer has told us to look at the Rice Boulevard and Pennsylvania Drive intersection, the Rice Boulevard and Stockton Drive, and Rice Boulevard and Morton Drive intersection. So first step after the scoping is to go out and actually physically count the intersections and get existing counts from the AMP hour and the PMP hour. We then take those counts, do an existing analysis on the intersection. Second step is to do a future year, so we looked at 2022 without the development, so we grow the existing counts, add on any nearby developments, which for this, for this development, we looked at Lot 24 as a nearby development, so we have that traffic on top of the existing, and then we add growth on top of the existing price. So we got our base analysis. Next step is to add on the site traffic. And based on the, the site, uh, the apartment units, we, we look at industry standard publication I T E trip generation manual. They do, you know, hundreds of studies in the, throughout the country and come up with rates for what an apartment unit would generate. Based on those numbers, the apartment units would generate 54 AMP hour trips and 91 PMP hour trips. So we added those trips on top of the base, on top of the, you know, existing growth nearby, and then the site traffic, and we analyzed that. And we compare the analysis for future year with the development to future year without the development. And based on that, um, we come up with any kind of improvements we would need for, you know, what, what the intersection level of service would be. And level of service is just like a grading system in school, where A is the best, F is the worst. And in this case, all the intersections, on average, operated level, F, level service C or better. When compared to base, we don't increase the delay enough or the level of service enough to require any additional road makers.
And did the township traffic engineer take a look at your study and opine generally that it was consistent with what he was looking for?
Yes.
Um, did you also, in your traffic impact study, look at the site distances at the proposed apartment driveway?
Yes.
And, um, what was your conclusion with respect to site distance at that intersection?
Uh, the site distance, the intersection for the, for the parking garage, parking area for the apartment building meets the, the apartment driveway distance.
And is that, and is that based on a criteria that PENDOT puts forward so that this meets both what's called desirable site distance and acceptable site distance?
Yes.
Okay. Um, did you also examine whether traffic signals are warranted at the intersections of Rice Boulevard with the Stockton Drive slash Wellington Square intersection and Rice Boulevard with Pennsylvania Drive for the proposed development?
Yes, and based on the results, as far as the, with the existing traffic counts, those intersections do not meet the signal warrants that would be required by PENDOT to install a signal. Now, I believe the developer has agreed to do a post-construction study within six months of the opening of Lot 24 to reevaluate those intersections, determine whether or not a signal would be warranted at that point.
And, and to further explain that, is Lot 24 where, is that across Rice Boulevard?
Yes.
Um, and is Lot 24 currently under construction for what's called Eagleview Landing, which is essentially a senior and memory care facility?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, the township traffic engineer recommended in comment nine of his review letter, um, that a post-construction of, and we're looking at phase one of that, be done six months after openings, that what Henke would be looking to do?
That's right.
Okay. Um, and the purpose of that would be to determine whether anything has changed with respect to warrants at the intersections?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. Uh, now, finally, did you also complete a parking study for the Eagleview Town Center, which we have marked as exhibit A16 and is dated December 5th, 2019?
Yes.
Um, and does that parking study also, or parking analysis also include a parking allocation plan, which with the original study was dated December 5th? But we also have marked as exhibit A17, an updated parking allocation plan dated January 10th, 2020?
Yes.
Um, and can you explain first what was studied in the parking analysis, and then we will touch on the parking allocation plan as there come in several questions about that?
Uh, sure, so with the parking study, we went out and actually did physical counts of the parking areas, counted the parking occupancy on, on, we did a Wednesday at four, we did a Wednesday at seven, we did a Friday at seven AM, oh, sorry, Wednesday at seven PM. We did a Friday morning at seven AM. We also counted it Friday at 12 PM and Friday at 5 PM. Based on those counts, as Neil mentioned before, the maximum occupied parking spaces that, at any given time, which happened to be Wednesday evening at 7 PM, was 604 park, uh, parking vehicles. And based on what is being provided, or what is proposed to be provided, there's 1,322 parking spaces being provided, or proposed, that would significantly be greater than what would be required based on the parking analysis.
So would it be, and is it part of your analysis, is it your conclusion in that study that whether the 20% reduction would be approved by the board that's requested for non-residential, or not, there would be more than enough spaces in the Eagleview Town Center for parking demand at what you've observed to be the peak time?
That's correct, yes.
Um, now, the parking allocation plan, which we have marked as exhibit A17, is... Can you, does, just wait for a moment here, the Zoom house. Was, was this plan prepared by your office?
Yes.
And does this show in color coding the various uses in the town center and where that, that parking could be allocated?
Yes.
Um, and does this plan demonstrate that all of the uses per township parking requirements can be accommodated on, in the existing parking and the proposed reconfiguration that's part of this conditional use application?
Yes.
Um, and specifically, with respect to if the 20% reduction is permitted, are there certain areas that are highlighted on this plan that would actually be that excess parking that would be what we would call the shared parking?
Yes.
Um, and can you identify which, which sort of, I don't know if there's a pointer, but, or Neil wants to do it, but, um, generally speaking, where those areas are located?
Yeah, so it's, the brown areas where, where Neil is pointing to.
And you're sort of a reddish brown color generally around Wellington Square, along Worton Boulevard, um, and an area closest to ACAC, as well as an area that is close to the open space?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay. Um, now, have you, based on your traffic analysis, did you also take a look at, the very last thing that's in the traffic analysis relates to queuing and lane length? And did you also take a look at that and determine whether any changes are needed with respect to queuing?
Uh, yes, we look, we've looked at the, the queuing in existing base and projected once again, and, uh, everything came back within the stores lengths that are currently provided.
Now, you've also had a chance to review the conditional use standards and the zoning ordinance, and in your opinion, will the proposed development materially increase traffic congestion on the road or at the road intersections that you studied as part of the traffic impact study? So again, if you just want to further, I mean, you talk, you touched on it, but just to explain that you did take a look at the various intersections, as well as the various movements at those intersections, and determined that there would be an acceptable level of service at each of those intersections?
That's right.
Okay. No further questions?
What have any questions?
So, I have training and research, and I guess my question, I, I would proceed with, we would look at numbers with a minimum of three data points. Is this standard for your, in your field to look at one?
Uh, yeah, so basically, PENDOT requires us to look at one, one time, well, it's, we look at, so when we do the counts, we count from seven to nine in the morning, 460 in the afternoon, and then from those peak hours, from those two hours, we take the highest hour within that two-hour period, and that's what we use to analyze, uh, that's what we use for our analysis. And that's a PENDOT requirement.
So, you know, the question I have is, um, you know, the, one of the nice parts about Eagleview Town Center is the various events that go on, but with, especially with those events are a lot of, you know, it's a limitation on some of the parking because some of the areas get closed. Um, and I can imagine that, that could further restrict availability of parking. Is there, you envision either a difficulty in conducting events, or a difficulty in finding parking for people who want to come to movie night, or, or closers, or races, or something like that?
No, I would not anticipate, I would not anticipate any difficulties. So the way we handle this today is every, every year what we do is we come into the township with a list of events, and then we, from there, we reduce, coordinate with the township police and make sure that they're at least on-site during the events. In addition to that, we have staff that are out there and directing people as to where to park during the events. And, you know, there's special events, and certainly they're limited to certain times throughout the year. If, if there were to be a large event that we, we recognize additional cars may be necessary, or additional spaces would be necessary, what's convenient, most of our, our events are held at night, so we do have a lot of office space and a lot of vacant parking lots nearby that would, we just utilize those spaces and either direct or shuttle people into town center for the event.
If you could just tutor me a little bit on this allocation plan, I mean, so, I mean, I understand that this is a way to kind of count up the number of spaces that are out of each building, but is this like an expectation also of where you would think people would park for these individual, or is just this accounting?
No, this is, this is not an expectation as far as where we would expect people to park, other than to park in garages, right? You know, when, you know, when a garage is built and associated with a building, we expect the tenants of that building to park in that garage. But other than that, it is a shared parking facility. And where we, where people park is, they're coming to their event, if they're going to ACAC, they're gonna park in a, a spot that's closest to that. But it is a shared, shared facility, and it is not intended to be restricted.
Man, I think the, the points have been made, you've probably heard, heard it the same as I, that, you know, I think there'll be a competition at least around this, this apartment building for the same spots around Wellington Square and up along there, as much, as same as the people who are coming to the restaurants, who clearly from currently like to the spots there, so I can see where there's definitely a concern there.
It goes to the environment that we're trying to create and make around the square. We're trying to create a specific environment that is not parking oriented around the square, and that the parking is provided above the retail buildings, really between the retail buildings and the ACAC building. That is the area designated for the fall in parking for town center.
I had a question for Tara. So basically, all of this has been approved. For us as a board, what decision-making do we have, whether we will allow the 20% reduction in parking? What?
Uh, yes, so all of the residential portions, they're not requesting a reduction in parking, they actually are providing enough parking for those uses. As for the 20% reduction in parking, if you were okay with that, that's what you would be granting tonight for all the commercial uses, since they're not fully occupied at the same time.
They're not asking for that?
They are asking for a 20% reduction in parking.
During, say, say that again?
For the commercial uses, since they're not all full at the same time.
Could I expand on that for, for... So what we're at, so Tara's a hundred percent correct. The way that the previous decisions were written, there was no 20% reduction given for any residential use. The 20% previously was given for commercial uses. So recognizing that there was the sharing between commercial uses, residential, and the types of commercial uses that are proposed within, or part of town center, what we're asking for as far as the 20% is to give the, so we've created a, a plan that shows that we can not only meet but exceed the full build-out. What we would like to do is during the land development process, identify spaces that may be isolated and not, and set aside as future. So if, if the township were to concur with those locations, and that would be the areas that would be, instead of paving areas and keeping, you have the ability to keep additional clean space, unless it was determined by the board that there was an actual, that there was a parking problem, and then you give us notice and we go and construct those spaces. Does that answer your question?
Yes, for, for that question. I have another question. The, the 35 parking spaces beneath the building that you mentioned?
Forty-five.
Forty-five, okay. Is that part of your count when you gave us a number 1,022?
It is part of the count, and the full build-out at the end of this project will
1,322.
Correct.
I kept saying 1,022, it was 1,322, okay.
Anyone else?
As far as the traffic impact, did you calculate the traffic impact based on the previously approved, it was, it could be an office building? And like, how would that have compared to this use?
Uh, as far as with this study, no, we, we did not do a comparison of the office versus the apartment building. I will say, a 30, I think it was 30,000 square feet of an office building would probably generate more traffic than, in the peak hours, than, than a residential, than, than the 45.
If you compare it from a parking standpoint, a 30,000 square foot building is previously proposed to have 120 parking spaces. A, the 44-unit residential building is proposed, both of these are based on ordinance definitions. 110, it actually requires less parking than, than does the office building.
That would've been, I mean, it's wide under the bridge, but it would've been interesting to see, because that's kind of the, in some ways, that's a decision in front of us, it's not simply what is now and what is with an apartment, because if we don't grant you it, you still have the ability to put an office lock, lock there, which... which then, you know, you remain a choice to put down as well, so. It's interesting, it would have been, as I said, would have been information that would have been nice to have.
Anything else on the board?
I do have a question, commentary on, it would have been nice to have.
Early hurts early.
Yeah, so we could look at it and say, okay, worst-case scenario, you build an office, office building, and what's the traffic impact there? I mean, your eye ball will fail.
Understood, understood.
So do any of the folks with party status have a question? Mr. Harbaugh?
Yes, for the traffic expert, what was the date of your parking study? And remember the weather, was it sunny, was it raining, was it, I think all those factors have a...
Well, the parking study was done, was conducted on Wednesday, November twentieth, and Friday, November twenty-second.
Friday, November what?
Twenty-second.
So, the concerts have been over, obviously, the farmer's market is over, the movies are over, everything's over by then. Do you recall the weather in those days?
I do.
And you never did a parking study during concert or peak traffic?
I'm sorry, just to have it sort of over instead of...
Oh, sorry. I was asking, so they never did a study during the busiest time of that whole development? During concerts, farmers markets, events that are going on?
No, but I will say that as part of the township comment, the township strategy in here's a comment letter, he has asked for some additional time periods to be looked at as far as for parking.
And do you know, has it been determined when that?
All he's asked for is seven PM on either Friday or Saturday, and it would be ideal to get a busy weekend evening count to see what the parking demand is in that period.
When, if this, if you get approved to do this apartment building, when is it going to take place, Mr. Fisher? When are you going to start construction, when do you anticipate it being open?
I would say within a year we'd start and be open in two.
And if you do not get approved, is it in fact you will do the building, the office building and the bank, are you considering that?
We will consider that.
So it's not a definite, we use the...
Well, at some point in time, yes.
Something will be going there eventually, for instance.
As well as.
Yes, sir. Mr. Rans?
May I ask some questions? How long will the development be across the street from where I live? My wife, I have a tension child, so the development, and where the, and two, another question, where are these construction trucks being parked when all this is happening?
Construction would be, I would anticipate construction to take approximately twelve months, and we would create as part of the land development process a detailed plan as far as how that would be, how construction, how useful to do that.
So what about my family, my children, my kids?
Or can you just speak up, please, I can't hear you.
How do I, obviously be working by eight to five, eight to seven?
The township has no awareness regarding when construction can and cannot occur, and we will compile this.
Mr. Rans, could I have to stand right here so the court reporter can hear you? Thank you.
Will non-garage parking spots ever be reserved for parking use only?
Non-garage parking spots?
Hard work for a little bit.
Oh, yeah.
Now, how would you make concessions for my customers? I have to run a business. It seems as though, I never really got a, I'm asking this question again because I don't know if I got a clear answer. Where would my customers park?
The same places that they park today.
It seems as though that the apartment, residential will be parking right in front of my building, because it's common use, isn't it?
It is common use.
Okay, so, is there going to be thirty-minute parking, like out in front of the pharmacy? Will there be not allowed to park for twenty-four hours like I see all the time? And let's just say, for example, it's all filled up. Now, I have customers that have been coming to me for thirteen years, seven years, a long time. And I have customers over seventy-five, seventy-six, eighty-six. We come out, this is why I work, I love my people and I love my residents. I come out and hold them, and they're eighty-six-year-olds, you have neuropathy, shpilk, he has neuropathy on the other side. So especially when it's wetter, or if it's far away, we have to walk him out, or them out, because we're concerned they're going to fall down the stairs, they lack that proprioceptive balance, et cetera. So, let's just say, for example, that the parking is full, which I know it will be because I've been there for a long time. Now, let's just say this customer has to maybe park in another common area. My concern is that, number one, I'll probably lose him. Number two, we're back to that senior citizen, him walking across the street. How do we, what do I do, and how do I, I'm going to lose customers. What do we do?
I think your comment regarding should Warden Boulevard have a time restriction placed on it is a very valid question, and...
But they don't do it, they just park there.
Any time restriction associated with on-street parking on Warden Boulevard would have to be approved by the municipality. And I would say that that's something that can be looked at and should be looked at during the land development process to see if, if Warden Boulevard should have, say, thirty-minute or two-hour parking or something along that lines, to make sure that the retail uses of Warden Boulevard are protected and make sure, to make sure that there is, it's designated really for retail uses.
Fair enough, fair enough. But the reality is, the people with the events, and when it gets busier and the peak times, they don't comply to those, to those laws, those rules. They just park there. So I can't tow them, and customers complain to me that they have to park around that. When it gets to events, they park. I even had a, I even had a, I even had a customer, an event, park in my five-ninety where, where I live.
So I believe that today there is no designation for limiting time on the Warden Boulevard, because there may be amount of time that people can park there, but they, you don't understand. So today, there's currently no, no restriction as far as timing, and now the time that people can park on Warden Boulevard.
That's a problem, there's...
And I'm saying, what I'm saying is that that should, is something that should be evaluated through, through, through the land development. So you, just so you understand, it is a public street, and you as an individual or as a property owner, you do not have the ability to go out there and post your property or restrict those spaces.
That's right.
But if it is approved as part of a development plan, then that is, that is something that could be installed and is enforceable by the police.
But the reality is, when the man is, is to park there, and he'll stay there for two hours, because that's how long he can, okay, what's the concession for that?
So today, again, I would say, they are not restricted today. So you don't know what they will do until they are actually here assigned in place to handle that.
But I understand that, but even this is going to multiply this by a wide times. And they're parking there now, that's, I'm just, I understand your projections. But the reality is, it's, it's full there now, and only, I'm just, we're referencing this, this projection you have. So I'm only, now I'm even more fretful of like, oh my gosh, there's not going to be a parking spot for my customers.
Is there another question in there? Okay, all right.
Given the fact that this building is obstructing my master bedroom, this is, I'm going to be watching a woman take, go into the shower, or make it to the shower. Well, I mean, there's a big, it's just off of my shoes. This is abruptly, this is, would you rather, would you like a big building in front of your home?
Is there...
So, this is, this is, this has become a personal question now, because it's right in front of my property and my wife, and, you know, when I get dressed, she keeps putting it dressed. What happens if the curtains are...
So I think we need, you are going to have an opportunity to present whatever testimony you want to present. Right now, we really just need to ask questions.
Okay, so, this building is obstructing my view of the Town Center, is obstructing my view for, I don't know, I don't know exactly what to say.
All right.
So how does this, how do we, do we have a concession for me? I open up the curtains and it says, she has a big building. No, it's... This building is in front of my home. That's the reality. So, what's, Neil, I'm asking you a question.
I'm sorry, but I have not heard a question.
The building is obstructing my view, period. Okay, so what could we do, what could you do, Neil, to, I mean, I don't even know how to answer this question.
Well, you will have an opportunity to make a statement.
There's a building in front of my, in front of my home. What can you do now, you're taking away the beautiful space, open space that was, that, that is, that is projected. What are you doing to, I mean, I don't even know how to ask this question back to... Why are you taking away my open space? Why are you taking away my beautiful view? Is that a question? Is that appropriate?
It's, it's a question if you can answer, if you can answer.
I mean, it's, it's hard to answer because it's personal, I understand. It's hard, it's hard to answer, my wife is upset.
All right, you have to let him answer that.
I understand, but I have to go home to my wife. Neil, you know what I mean, if you have to go home to your wife.
I do have to go home to my wife.
We all gotta go home, let's go.
All right, but hold on a second, hold on a second. Everyone with party status is going to get their due process. If you think yelling at someone asking you a question or trying to answer questions is going to speed things up, you're wrong, okay? So let the gentleman try and ask his questions. I'll try and move it along as fast as we can. Everyone's going to get, not everyone is a trained lawyer who knows how to ask questions in an orderly fashion. So let's, could I have one break? And let's just try and keep this thing moving, go ahead, please.
I understand your question, and, and I also have to unders, I also have to assume that you knew when you purchased your building that as part of that, you were part of the Town Center Association, and as part of that, there was a master plan. And as part of that, there was a thirty thousand square foot office building, multi-story, posed directly opposite of your house.
One more question. What, do you know the height of, I'm going to ask this one now. Do you know the height of my building? Because your, the building that you're putting is forty-six feet, correct? And you're proposing for fifty-one?
Approximately forty-seven.
You're proposing for sixty-one, what is the height of my building?
Approximately forty-two.
Here's a little bit higher, so I'll listen in.
All right, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other people with party status?
Yes, a simple question concerning Warden Boulevard.
What's your name, sir?
William Rogers.
Okay.
On Warden Boulevard, considering the concern about potential for speeding traffic, is there any consideration of some great speed-limiting devices? For example, speed bumps or things like that?
So Warden Boulevard is a township road. I would discourage the use of speed bumps as they are, I think they cause more problems than the benefit that is received. In lieu of that, I think that there are other traffic calming measures to be, that could be implemented. And it really relates to signage, and it relates to striding, and how crosswalks are implemented. So I do believe that there are traffic calming measures that can be implemented on Warden Boulevard, and I would recommend against speed bumps.
Just to answer that. For those of you who don't know, we have had a discussion about speed bumps at a different location often, and our first responders have said that they advise against speed bumps.
Well, my comment was really about some mechanism to slow it down, whatever that proper mechanism is, but it should be considered what could be done to do that, because it doesn't seem like that is actually part of the traffic study, the intersections we're studying. But was the actual speed on Warden Boulevard and Rockin Town says are actually studied in your work?
The speed study was not conducted.
Mr. Moran?
Well, we saw the sign alerting us to the proposed parking building. We saw it signed ten years ago for the proposed hotel. We never saw a sign for an office building. When was the office building permitted, given?
Approximately, I would say, probably around twenty-five years ago.
So the permit was in effect at the beginning of the...
It was part of the original master plan.
Was there any requirement that that has to be revisited?
No.
No parking issues, no...
The parking was designed for the thirty thousand square foot office building, which is greater than the forty-four year old apartment building.
All right, I think that was everybody?
Do I ask a question?
Are you, you don't have party status?
No, I don't.
Okay, there will be a public comment period, but right now, we're just doing testimony. So let's finish, we can finish up, I think we're almost done with, with the app content, so hopefully we'll get said, public comments soon, so. Counsel, do you have any redirect?
Just one follow-up question, Neil, just so everyone's clear. Under the proposed plan, even without the 20% reduction, you could provide all of the parking and exceed the parking requirement for the proposal that's in front of the board tonight, is that correct?
That's correct.
And so the one thousand three hundred twenty-two parking space number that you're referring to would be the proposed parking at full build-out without the 20% reduction, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Can I ask you something tonight? Are you guys deciding, should I do this? On the, are you doing what is...
Probably not, probably not, no.
Okay, good.
One question about the parking, and this is going to be, you, you, you said that the peak use was around half as much, or take, around half as much as what the expected, I mean, provided parking is. So I mean, equivalent, that was right, you, you said that. You said, but you were talking about having the parking in reserve rather than paving. Did you identify spots that you would consider to be the reserve spots now, or would that be another future consideration?
That would be under, I would request that be under consideration during the land development process so that we could, we could work with the township and the township staff to identify areas that are removed and not, would not be used, and that, that way we can keep those areas green instead of by-copping them. My initial thought would be up near the outdoor recreation area.
Counsel, any follow-up?
No further follow-up, thank you.
Do you want to do exhibits?
Yes, please. I'd like to move into evidence, exhibit A fourteen through A seventeen.
Any objection from the parties? All right, the exhibits are accepted.
Thank you.
Is that all for your case? Okay, so now, we're going to give the, the folks with party status an opportunity to present a case. This means now you don't have to ask questions. If you have something to say, you're going to be sworn, you're going to be under oath. If you have something to say, this is your opportunity to say it. And we'll do that, and then we're going to get the public comments, so. Are Mr. and Mrs. Summerson still there?
Yes.
Would you, would you like to make, present anything? No?
Question I would have to get from...
Okay, so now, now it's, it's time for you to put on a case if there's a statement you want to make, if there's evidence, if you have witnesses, if you have exhibits. Do you have any of that you'd like to put into the record?
No, just a statement that I would be concerned about supervision for a recreation area that it is...
Okay, so, I'm, I'm sorry, let me just, I'm going to ask the court reporter to swear you, because now you're actually testifying. So, if you would just raise your right hand.
Do you want me to swear or work on the testimony you give to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay. Now you can proceed, thanks.
So, I would just have a concern about that recreation area and how much supervision. Like, at this point, we don't know what will be there, you know, basketball courts or rollerblading, you know, court for sure. And, you know, how that would be supervised, especially in the evening, there would be, you know, teens there, just the noise level and the safety that would be for everyone concerned. That would be a question I have. Where would that jurisdiction be responsible? Who would be responsible for that? Would you be okay agreeing on that?
I'll have fun if you, if you want to answer that, that's fine.
All right, so, what we're proposing right now is the use. And then, so, when we do come in for land development, at that time, we will designate the specific, the specific types of uses within that, within the, the recreation area, and how we are going to handle noise, how we're going to handle lighting, all of that associated with, and safety and security as, as part of that land development plan.
Okay, I don't think I have any other questions.
Thanks very much. Mr. Ransell?
I have.
Do you have any, do you want to give any testimony? Any exhibits?
Well, I mean...
Well, if you do, I'm going to swear to you at first, so. Okay.
Raise your hand. Do you want me to swear or work on the testimony you give to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, you can provide whatever statement, testimony you want to give.
I'm concerned with the parking for my business and my customers. I'm concerned that I'm losing the space, the open space, and the other people that live in that, live work units as well, renters, people who live their own homes. And I'm very concerned about the, the hazardous and the danger that it creates with the progressive population that it's, that hurt the proposed apartment building. And I, I enjoy Eagleview, and I enjoy that my wife enjoys walking through, and now she's concerned now that we have another child that walking across the street and even getting to the recreational, recreational that they're proposing. That's, that's the one big danger, that's one big hazardous to get to, because sidewalks, and then you have to, I, I, I'm just, I didn't really, I, I would like to see the other trajectory. Can I see that other plant, the other plant with the trees and things that you, just how, how, so there's a sidewalk on the right side of one bullet there, is there sidewalks going all the way out to the, oh, that's what, that's the question I have. But that's, you know, concerning for my family, so, that's, that's my testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Harbaugh? Can we just swear again? Thank you.
Do you want me to swear or work on the testimony you give to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
So, Mr. Fisher, you said originally you're an expert, you're a civil engineer expert in, that I consider myself to be somewhat of an expert in Eagleview. The community as a whole, as a resident, for 26 years, we were the fourth house in there. We believe so much in the whole concept that we purchased another unit 12 years ago, a live-work unit. So, we are strong advocates and believers in the whole town center. What you've developed is great. Don't get me wrong, we love it there, and as a realtor, I tell you, it's a hot commodity to live in there. You can sell a home very quickly in there. My concern is, I don't see the apartments providing any type of amenity to me as a resident, or any of the other thousand people that live there. I think truly, the only reason that we're even here, and you're trying to do this, is one simple five-letter word. It starts with M, it ends with Y. I think we all know what it is.
Thank you, Mr. Harbaugh.
From March 12th all the way up to Rio, even past, to Ludwig's now, there's got to be a limit somewhere, and there's plenty of open space out there to keep developing, keep going towards Popstadt, go to Elversen. But Eagleview is full, we love it the way it is, we want it to stay that way, it's a great place to raise a family, I raised my children there. So, we want to keep that hometown feeling in Eagleview. And this building that you're proposing does nothing to increase the value of our properties or the lifestyle that we're living.
Mr. Rogers, would you like to present anything?
Yeah, I'd like to.
And Mr. Moran, would you like to present anything?
Yeah.
Can we, can we swear again?
Do you want me to swear or work on the testimony you give to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
My feeling is, and I think it is with many people here, maybe most, maybe all of them, is that we don't want this building. We like the open ground, we like the dogs, the children, the frisbees, they're looking at it, they're just living it. It's just part of our neighborhood, we love that grassy area. It's not as big as it used to be, it's just a wide, but it, it's, it's very important for a lot of reasons. It seems that there's a difference in concept between the Hackett group and the residents of Eagleview. The Hackett group, I heard this 10 years ago with the hotels, the concept was that, and Mr. Hackett, that's Bob Hackett, his trips around Europe, he liked those town squares, he liked the buildings all around the town square, he liked the flat area, where the buildings all around. And he envisioned, and still does, Eagleview to be the same. He envisions it as being a park that almost closes Camp Center, actually, compared to Europe, but he envisions buildings be all around. It didn't work with the hotel, but now 10 years later, you're back with another building, so, which is the same concept, where you have a little tiny town center there, surrounded by buildings. Our concept is that we like having at least part of it open, where we can look at it from a distance, where we feel not so constrained, not so closed in with large buildings around us. And that, I think, is the crux of this whole thing here. The Hackett group leaves in buildings, big ones, all around the square, or you believe in the opposite. And I think we have a good argument for it not being here. Now, there's a good argument, the, the little drawing, is if you take that thing and you put up a corner, there's something waiting, and everything reads just fine. We wouldn't care, maybe five stories tall, it's fine. Just leave it open for us to look at and walk in and have some kids.
Thank you very much. All right, so now, we're going to open it up to public comment, party, whether, you know, anyone who's not a party, it's just time for anyone who's sat here for the last few hours, if they have something they want to say, comment, we're just going to ask, because there's a lot of folks, we're going to ask them to keep it brief, and allow, you know, everyone, and try not to repeat if something's already been said. Yes, sir?
I live at 534 Gramercy, my name is Mitchell Berman. There are three elements here that come to question. One, how are we going to provide for services to the building? Trash, refuse, garbage, how's all that coming out? Nobody said anything about access for trucks and services, one. Two, no one showed what the backside of the building is going to look like. We saw renderings of the front, but the actual Warden side that most of us see, nobody's seen a rendering option. That's the second. The third, and I have to re-joke, those spaces that we've enjoyed for 20 years are important to us. They belong to us at this point, because we've invested in the neighborhood. And the fourth element is, there are two porta-potties that are used by the FedEx group, by the landscapers, by the runners, by people accessing the events that go on. Where are they going? Because we know what's going to happen, they're going to wind up in our backyard.
Thank you.
Can you say your next name again, sir?
Bernie, B-E-R-M-A-N.
So, let me, and, and just, and I know we said this early on, and I think it's worth repeating, so this is a conditional use proceeding, which is essentially the first step, something that's required as part of the township ordinance for a change in this particular part of the township. If it's approved, and the board approves, then it's going to go through land development. And that's where a lot of these issues on the building and the road size, and a lot of those issues are going to be worked out. Doesn't mean that this is any less important, I just want to, I just want folks to understand that there is, this is the first step in, in a, in a multi-step process. Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, my name is Sally Vaughn, be like Victor, A-U-G-H-N. I live at 637 Huntington Drive in Eagleview in the Gardens section, and I'm in opposition of this proposal. Appreciate your comments earlier, sir, about the mundane language and the mumbo jumbo, because it's lots taken as resident. I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a developer, I'm not a government official, but I did try to read early, so that I was educated and understood. And as I looked at the section 611C that you're referencing here, it says, notwithstanding any other reference, not withstanding any other section or provision of this ordinance respect to any proposed use, maybe following criteria, shall be permitted only by conditional use in accordance with the procedures and standards set forth in Section 806, this ordinance. So, I went to Section 806, like, okay, what's that all about? And it says, in Section 806-4C, that the proposed change will constitute an appropriate use in that area, and will not injure or detract from the use of surrounding properties where from the character of the neighborhood. And in Section 806-4D, that the proposed use at the location in question would be in the public interest. That language around character and be in the public interest is certainly subjective, and I would like to share my opinion. So, my significant other and I have been together for 17 years, and we purchased a home in the Gardens and moved to Eagleview in 2018. After months of searching for a forever home, we were the reason, we were exhausted from trying to find a community, and we stumbled upon Eagleview accidentally, we immediately fell in love. We drove around, we felt like we could step back in time, people were waving, the properties were modest, they were well-maintained, and we stopped down at Al Pastor for a bite to feed. And as we walked back to our car, we encountered a lovely couple who was walking their three dogs. Now, I was very heartened to say tonight that this lovely couple is sitting several seats down from me, and we just heard from Mr. Berman. And this lovely couple stopped and took their time to chat with some strangers, tell them how much they love Eagleview, that they had lived there for nearly two decades, shared their contact information with us, virtual strangers, and said, "Please call us anytime, stop over and visit us, we have a little rusty dog in our front yard, a little thing, come by, we'll tell you anything about Eagleview, we'll introduce you to people." We got in our car, we couldn't call our wheelchair fast enough, we moved in 60 days later. So, that part really describes to me the character of Eagleview. We were so excited that we had moved into a development that had a developer like Hackett, who seemed to have a vision and commitment to green space and who valued quality of life. Those qualities are relatively non-existent in current builders. In fact, one of the first things we did to improve our properties, we redid old landscaping rabbit to incorporate native plants that would support the land, the environment, and support pollinators, gardens, the local wildlife. We were so thrilled that we were able to do that, that we found a community that would approve that request. And in fact, we did have to ask for permission to do that. So, it is a good neighborhood to ask what the other people in the community would like to have. And so, if you're wondering what all of this has to do with the proposal in hand, that is my interpretation of character of the neighborhood, the language that you use in your ordinance. The character is the wide streets that allow the residents to breathe, I think someone mentioned over here being constrictive, and the open spaces that create a feeling of town. That vista that you see as you walk down, and you see the lights in the farmer's market, and you see the children and the dogs, and you can see the Christmas tree, and you can hear the little strains of the guitar, that is what beckons neighbors to linger and create a community. And it's interesting, because I found some quotes from Bob Hackett, the CEO of Hackett Group, and it seems that he would agree with me, at least if he did at one point. So, I have a newspaper article here from June 9th of 2000. This article is highlighting, this article is highlighting the planning effort known as traditional neighborhood development, or TMD. Eagleview is touted as an example of that innovative planning effort. Mr. Hackett has quoted this statement, "This approach encourages more community interaction, houses with front porches closer to the street, and lots of shared open space, the way towns in the past were originally created. This neo-traditional design results in a more active, vibrant community, and as a positive byproduct, preserves open space." Additionally, in this October 1999 article that I also have in the Philadelphia Business Journal, Mr. Hackett has quoted this saying, "That the Eagleview is a neo-traditional development. You build a town the way towns were built before World War II." Well, before World War II, big developers didn't come in and build parking garages and apartments next to the village, bringing, blocking views from the local pharmacy, and making it difficult to walk and futureized local business. So, adding additional congestion to the area will undoubtedly detract from the surrounding properties as used by your language, and the beautiful vistas looking into the town square will be lost. Traffic will increase and green space will be lost. This proposed recreation area is a proposal, that's not a guarantee, so we are losing the existing green space. And Mr. Hackett himself described the importance of lots of shared open space. So, my final comments in the evening focus on your language used in 806-4D regarding the proposed use would be in the public interest. As the Hackett proposed was to add apartments to a development that were hundreds of apartments already exist, and we understand that this building has already been approved there, but in 25 years, Hackett has not built an office space there, because there's tons of unused office space around. They, they know that they don't need to build an office space there, they can't rent it. So, to your comments are around something that starts with M and ends in Y, they're trying to capitalize on the current millennial trend around purchasing apartments. And they said that they would consider future office space, I would say seriously, don't, that would be my speculation. So, with the increase of congestion, and the new residents not paying property tax, it would certainly seem that this proposed use is not in the public interest. And if you look around, these are the residents of Eagleview, the public, and we're not interested.
Hi, I'm Mark Scher, I've lived in Eagleview since 1995, in the Gardens section, and I want to piggyback on that wonderful speech you just made, and have, bring it back to them and say, "How does that apartment building make the quality of life of the residents better?" Somebody who agrees with that, raise your hand. "That makes it better?" No. I hope my thoughts are, at least my time today, that green space is so important to everybody, not just live-work, and you say you want buildings all around the square, you've got buildings all around the square, you have a live-work on, on the side that you want.
Thank you. Yes?
My name is Nancy Baumann, I live at 603 Cricket Lane, and I waited three and a half years to move into Eagleview. I've lived there less than 90 days, and I'm extremely upset about this proposed development. I think everyone's focusing on the apartment buildings, yes, that will create enormous traffic and safety issues, but I'm just as concerned about the recreation area. I think personally, I would rather have the business office building, which I know they can't rent, but at least those people would not be in the parking lot nights, weekends, when the town square is probably the busiest. And also, the teen center, though the increased traffic, even more so than the office building, appears dropping off, picking up. I cannot believe, having been a parent of two children, that that... that that recreation center would do anything to support the vibrancy of the businesses. The parents who are dropping their kids off to, you know, play or whatever, they're not going to hang around and go out to dinner. You know, it, it's really just going to be a way for the kids to, you know, go there and hang out with their friends. I think anyone who's lived in the area, I moved out of Exton, Pennsylvania, because there are 3,300 new apartments being built in Exton. So, I left Exton to come to Eagleview. And now I'm faced with exactly why I moved down to Exton. But you're going to have drugs and alcohol. Anyone remember when the kids used to hang out at the Exton Mall on Friday nights?
Yes.
So, I'm more in favor of the office building for all of those reasons if we have to take one or the other.
Yes, sir?
Hi, my name is Douglas Simpson. I live at 605 Portland Drive. I was actually at the Planning Commission meeting this past Wednesday. A couple of points that were raised there that not much of anybody heard. At some point, Mr. Fisher, my now husband, going back and forth on the number of parking units within the Eagleview Town Center. He unsolicited at some point mentioned the possibility of actually a parking garage located next to the Wellington Building across from Brickside Cavern. I think it's a lodge there, a possibility. I was told by the township engineer that won't happen. But don't worry, because the architecture will flow with the rest of the buildings. It was also mentioned, I can't remember where the conversation, Mr. Fisher, about the possibility of sub bus also coming into Eagleview, not like Eagle Boulevard, when I mentioned the notion of color transportation not being terribly accessible by one Eagleview owner to catch the bus. The minister might actually come in closer. At which point, I sort of had a problem. I have four children, all under, ages 11 and under. They currently go down to Rita's on their bikes or go down to the farmer's market on their bikes. At which point, I would feel less comfortable sort of than having kids compete with school guards. So, listen, buses stopping on a dime if they have to dart out because we tell children not to do things, they do them anyway. The big thing, more than anything else, is these kinds of things impact the home value, right? I moved here from Charlotte, North Carolina back in 2011. And when we came in, the possibility of the parking garage wasn't there, certainly no buses, and not an overdeveloped town center. But if I were coming in today and I saw all these things, I'd say, well, I'm living out in Chester County. I'm not in Philadelphia. I, I want space. I want land. And now someone comes in, my home's less appealing than somewhere else in within the county if they want that space. So, every little development, if there's an office building that is vacant, or again, there's some competition with town apartments, next to Square, if those don't get the rent they need, then there's competition. It impacts my value, my hope. If I ever have to sell to my job to relocate to Phoenix or Charlotte or London, I'm going to get less than I could today. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
My name is Steve Dow. I live at 312 Brooklyn, Midrile in Euclid Township outside of Eagleview. I have lived in Euclid Township since 1970. That makes it 50 years now. And as a resident of the overall township and growing up in a Hackett home in Marchwood, I have to say that I'm surprised a little bit about being here because I've always been a big fan of a Hackett group, a local builder, not a Toll Brothers or a 40, or somebody from Chicago or Texas just coming in just to make money to build communities. And the fact that we have this community and that Eagleview was predicated when it was farmland, when I lived here as a kid and as a teenager, as a dense, a more dense area to relieve the urban sprawl that is going on all over the county and all the counties, from Boston down to PC, that master plans underneath the county, that master plan, the landscapes to plan, to have cluster developments like Eagleview to relieve the overall congestion and urban sprawl that's been going on for the last 50 years or longer. And that Eagleview has been a perfect example of this. And that the Hackett group has been, that has been their model. And it's only, it's in their own interest that these things be successful, that their developments be successful, because it's their image at the end of the day. And Eagleview is their foundation jewel. And why would they build something that is going to tarnish their image?
All right. Thank you. Yes, sir?
My name is Mike Ickenelly. I've lived in Eagleview for 22 years. I live at 622 Crumner Drive. I live two blocks from the Town Center, that good building. I was here, and this place was, when Town Center was a dirt road and there were meadows and trees and forests. I know what the plans are for Eagleview. I understood that. But the rationale for creating vibrancy does not make sense. It's illogical. You have 44 units. You have over 1,000 people who live in Eagleview alone. Not counting the people that come from the outside, come to the restaurants and the festivals and everything else. 44 people are not going to make the town center in Eagleview more vibrant. It's illogical. And I think, you know, it's, it's kind of insults our intelligence here, I think, to consider that as a rationale for building these structures. Okay? We're not, I'm not against, I mean, I brought into the concept of Eagleview just like everyone else here, because it was a planned community. It was a local builder. And, I mean, as a matter of fact, you know, Berman, you know, Berman, he, he, he was on the board of a place I worked with for 40 years. And I don't think he would, I think he would listen to us, the people who live in his community, and he would hear us. And also, asking you guys to do is to do the same. Okay? We're from Eagleview here. We're not from outside, most of us. We know. And we've been here a long time. And we've seen it shrink, the open space is shrinking, shrinking, shrinking. It gets smaller and smaller. And we don't understand why, because the promise was that that wasn't happening. It's happening. Thank you.
Can you say your name again, sir?
Michael Ickenelly.
Ickenelly, please.
I, A-C-O-N-E-T-L-E.
602 Crumner.
Hi, my name is Bill Creager. I live at 401 Longwood Drive. C-R-D-E-G-E-R. I do not live in Eagleview, but I've probably spent a small fortune at Brickside. So, I am, I am more of a patron of the establishments than I am a resident around the place. And I've been a Chester County resident since 1981. So I'm certainly used to the change that's been occurring throughout. And that's really what tonight should be about, is the change. And what could have happened, which is 20,000 square feet of AC/AC, a 4,800 square foot bank that are a dying breed, mud home blockbusters. And in an apartment, I mean, a, an office building that there's more available office space, not only in our area, but the entire Delaware Valley area. So I think the focus tonight should be on the change of what he's proposing or what they're proposing is certainly better than what he's already allowed to do. So I'm a fan of the project.
Sir?
Steve Lorpus, 606 Aurora Lane. I'm in St. Butte, New York. Under nine days, I've lived here. I won't go into the back story, but I did love to, you know, the thing I dreamt here was open space. I would ask that if they, if you are going to put in apartments, I really do like the plan of flipping it and putting it in by the AC/AC.
That's a little hard.
I'm sorry then. But my, my point would be that as a younger person, and you said you're killing the younger millennials, active lifestyles with the gym right there would be a nice touch to have. And for older people, which is the other half that you were hoping to appeal to, I'd imagine the gym being right there would also be appealing to them. So, if you do have to both, I'm not saying against both options, but if you have to choose to reconsider flipping, kind of in agreement with that gentleman over there.
Can you spell your last name for me?
Lorpus, L-O-R-E-F-I-C.
And your address again?
606 Aurora Lane.
I'm Lynn Villovis. We're definitely going to need my last name still. I'm V-I-L-L-A-L-O-B-O-S. I'm at 457 The Willow. Been there 18 years, the first house built on Beechwood Drive. And I'm thinking about downsides. I want to stay in Eagleview, because I love the Eagleview. And my partner works in Eagleview. But when this happens, I don't think I would be able to stay.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Here Danny, you, we received a number of emails.
We did. And I just want to make that known. I'm a public comment. I got that through email.
All right. Council, have you seen the emails? Okay, so, so can we, we'll get them to you. Can you let us know by Wednesday whether or not you have an objection?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. Well, I, I want to thank everybody. I want to thank the applicant. I want to thank the parties and everyone who sat here for as long as you did. The decision is not going to be made tonight. We expect the decision to be made at the next meeting. The board supervisors have 45 days to close the hearing to prepare a written decision. The written decision will be mailed to the applicant at the address in the application. An appeal may be filed in the Court of Common Pleas of Chester County. Within 30 days of the written decision, if no appeal is filed, the decision of the board becomes final. The hearing is now closed and the record is now closed. Thank you, everybody.